I'll probably need you to draw a laptop, so I can imagine.
Right.
Unless you want to start doing stuff?
I can start reading it through there.
Which might be a reading.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:04 July 19th, 2021, GBOS regular meeting in the Gerwood community room. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska statute 44 dot 62 dot 310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25, public meetings. The Gerwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Gerwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. Call to order right now as Chair Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, and Mike Edgington. Role call first, and then we'll do disclosures. Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Mike Edgington, co-chair and land use supervisor.
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety.
Amanda Sassy, Road Supervisor.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Any disclosures tonight?
Good morning, this is Jennifer Sullivan, your please.
Thank you.
I have two disclosures. I've done some volunteering and I currently administer a grant for good bear way, which is item eight. And my wife is treasurer, I think it is, of Land Use Committee, which I think touches on items. I'm struggling here. Item number 12 and 16.
Anyone else? Does anyone find any conflict? Okay. Agenda revisions and approval, July 19th, 2021, regular meeting agenda approval. I would like to suggest we move number eight, number 19 to Old Business. It could be number 17 or number 18, rather, in Old Business.
Move to, I move to move item 19 to Old Business.
Let's vote on that.
We'll get second.
Go second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Okay.
Was this discussed at the last meeting? Is that why it's moved?
No, but there is a single applicant for seat D for 19, so there's, it didn't seem that we needed to take another additional month to discuss anything else.
Makes sense.
Okay. So that agenda is approved. June 21st, regular.
You probably should just do it by a second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye to.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agendas approved with revision, June 21st, 2021, regular meeting minutes approval. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the June 21st, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Great. And June 29th, 2021, GBOS work session regarding.
Sorry.
Yes.
Wait. On the regular minutes, I had a comment about that on June 21st. I would like to request that we, under agenda number 13, agenda item LUC 204 dash 04, that the responses that are listed indicate who's making the response. And so, like, I see my name on there, but no other names, and I think it's super critical, particularly because there are some errors in there that we have the name of who's responding. So I would like to ask that.
Jennifer, you're requesting that you don't, can you repeat what you'd like?
I would like, see how my comments, I'm listed as the person making the comments, but there is no name listed for where the who's responding.
Mm-hmm.
I would like the name listed for who's responding.
Well, I see, I didn't mean that all of those were necessarily coming from you.
Right.
So what language would you like for me to add?
I guess I would just like, I would just like to know who's respond, who's saying what in there.
I don't, yeah.
Possible or not.
So I've been advised in the past to avoid calling out people in the minutes, so other than supervisors and staff, I usually don't designate who said what. It's more of like the community's conversation included this. And, you know, there, there are often misunderstandings in there.
The only thing is that these responses are all from GBOS.
Sure. Well, I'm happy to amend the minutes any way you want.
Okay.
I'm just looking for what that would be, so.
So specifically, if it says what my comments are, I would like to have whoever's responder also be identified.
Okay.
Because in this case, it was not community members who were responding.
Gotcha. Okay. So want to say that Mike Edgington responds?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need to? Uh, we move to June 29th, TBOS?
Are we approving those?
I think you need to.
Has it been edited, or should we wait until we see a revision?
Sure.
We can do a revision.
Okay, so we'll approve this, we'll get revision next month. Or next week. Okay. June 29th, 2021, GBOS work session regarding the grant minutes approval.
I'm going to tip.
Second.
Great. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Public comments will be late.
HLBAC meeting is scheduled for July 22nd at 11:30 a.m. via Teams. See agenda for the connection information in that hyperlink. The Planning Department Administrative Site Plan Review 2021 dash 0100, scheduled as a non-public hearing with the Planning Director's Decision Date of August 26th, 2021. More information available here at this hyperlink. And HLB RFP results for development of portion of HLB parcels 6 dash 011, 6 dash 016, and 6 dash 017 are available for review on the HLB website here at this hyperlink. Okay, Mike, would you like to have the chair for the number one?
Yeah, sure. Actually, can I just make a comment on the, one of the announcements?
Okay.
So the Panultimate Announcement about the Administrative Site Review, Administrative Site Plan Review, that's for a, to structural development on Aliaska Highway. I guess Joe Bell is the owner of that. So just in case people aren't going directly to the website to check, down by Iris Pond roughly. So you want me to take introductions on this?
Okay.
So we're in introductions, presentations, and reports. We start off with the Legislative Report. Do we have anyone here from the Legislature or Assembly? I don't see anyone in person. I don't think there's anyone on the phone either.
No, but one thing we might address on this is that we did request, we got a request from Representative Kaufman's office to have a work session with GBOS to talk about capital needs.
Yes.
Which is timely because a work session tomorrow on the annual budget will be giving the capital list for the valley. So if we, probably at some point in time, we'll try to coordinate a work session involving their staff and moving forward with capital needs for Gerwood.
Would it be possible to make that coincident with one of the budget meetings perhaps?
We could try, see if we can get their staff at one of those meetings.
Great. I think we did get a, I believe, an email from our.
Kelly.
From Kelly, from our school board representative.
Did we? I never.
Did you see it?
Today?
Yeah, I think it was today.
Yeah, there was an email.
I haven't seen it.
She wants to send directly to you guys.
Oh, she did, and I can, I will pull it up.
Maybe it went to the GBOS one, I haven't been on there since this afternoon.
Okay, I'll read it, the record. Dear GBOS, I appreciate you sharing all your school district updates at the GBOS meeting last month and the questions attendees presented. Although I'm aware of your in-person meeting tonight, it's timing conflicts with Hillside Community Council meeting, and because I was at GBOS last month, I'm going to prioritize attending the Hillside Community Council tonight. So I'm cleaning my notes below in the hopes that one of you will be able to share these with the GBOS attendees. Looking ahead, I'd like to attend your August meeting in person. Right, here are the notes, July. There were approximately 10,000 students in ASD summer school programs this summer. On masking, the administration made masking optional this summer, and has suggested that masking will be a family choice this fall, but there's been no board vote or discussion so far regarding mask policies for the upcoming school year, so it is subject to change. The regular academic year begins on August the 17th for grades one to 12, and begins August the 24th for preschool and kindergarten. Start times will be 8 a.m. high school, 8:45 middle school, 9:30 elementary school. Elementary students will have specials. I don't know what that means. Food service in 2021-22 will be free for students, which comes from federal policy. Also, the ASD Fall Lottery closes for applications this Wednesday, so that's the 22nd of July. Families will receive notification on the 28th of July. ESSER3 relief funds. The school board is still awaiting the administration suggestions for utilizing the $112 million relief based on community priorities, and that will address learning loss, air quality, underserved students, and the school board is expected to hear more information in August. Quite a bit of information about the state failing to do the reverse sweep of the constitutional budget reserve. This might change during the August special session, but for now, it will, it will not directly affect K-12 operational funding next year. It may impact ASD's graduating students because the Alaska Performance Scholarship didn't receive any funding. It's normally 11.75 million. It will impact Anchorage property owners because the state's only funding 37% of the state school fund debt reimbursement, unless it's changed in one of the special sessions. This will be a cost shift of approximately $20 million to the municipality of Anchorage, and will cost the average property owner approximately $58 per 100,000 assessed value of their property. ASD is beginning a three-year transition to inclusive classrooms to better support learning disabled students who are earning high school diplomas, not ASD's intensive need students. Okay, so I'm just abridging slightly. In elementary and middle school, ASD includes special education students in the core norming classrooms with their peers, but in high school, ASD has tracked special education students with similar peers. Over the next three years, ASD will be building capacity around co-teaching in high school, a best practice utilized around the country. And in neighboring districts, in more than 20 years. Why are we doing this? Including, included students, so it develops stronger skills in reading and mathematics. They have high rates of attendance and are less likely to have behavioral problems, more likely to complete secondary school than students who've not been included. And as al-dulch, students with disabilities who've been included are more likely to enroll in post-secondary education, to be employed or live independently. But students without learning disabilities, being educated alongside a student with a disability, doesn't lead to adverse effects and can foster many positive outcomes. Non-disabled students who are educated in inclusive classrooms hold less prejudicial views and are more accepting of people who are different from themselves. Research has demonstrated a reduced fear of human differences accompanied by increased comfort and awareness, growth in social cognition, improvements in self-concept, develop personal moral and ethical principles, and warm and caring friendships. ASD goals are to teach students in the least restrictive environment to ensure high-quality instruction for all students while learning with their peers, and to give additional support in the classroom to those who need them. There are board meetings on YouTube, there's a new Google form to sign up to testify, and the next meeting is August the 3rd. There is also a helpline, which is 97742HELP, for any resources for families that is ASD related. And we have an email address as well, and we'll add this to the packet in a minute. I can't answer questions, unfortunately.
Mike, that was Kelly Lessons, right?
Kelly Lessons, yes, sorry, I should have said so. That was Kelly Lessons, who's our liaison for this, this area to the Anchorage School Board. Okay. So we move on to item number two, APL Garish Library Report. I'd like to welcome Jamie White, who's our new library manager.
Thank you.
Can you go and speak with the microphone? That'll be better for radio listeners.
Hey, just for a question, just got your text from the radio station. If we could speak a little louder, it's hard to pick up.
Sure.
Should I move this closer?
No, you're good.
Okay. I'm on the hotspot now.
Yeah.
So yes, I'm Jamie White. I'm the new branch manager at the Scott and Wesley Garish Library. I just started last week. Little about myself, I moved to Anchorage in December of 2018, where I started working at the Lusak Library in Midtown Anchorage as the Patron Services Supervisor, and then I just recently joined the Gerwood team. Let me know what you'd like to see from your library, as is your library, and if you'd like to learn more about current services that we're offering. The current library hours are 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., Tuesday through Saturday. Summer Discovery Program ends on July 31st, so there's still chance to start, if you're a voracious reader, start a reading log and to hand in your finished reading logs. You have chances to win gift cards upon completion, and that's for both adults and youth. Some library programs coming up. July 21st at noon, we have an outside play activity with soccer balls, footballs, frisbees, and jump ropes. July 23rd at 11 a.m., we have Storytime. July 28th at noon, we have an activity called Things That Fly for Youth. And then July 30th, we have an 11 a.m. Storytime. Some library materials I'd like to highlight for the community are hotspots. We call them MiFi's at the library. If you have an Anchorage Public Library card, you can get put on a waiting list for a hotspot. Usually they work anywhere we can get GCI service. It's been a really popular service that has helped lots of people. We also have Chromebooks that you can request and check out. Something to note about Chromebooks is that you do need Wi-Fi to connect to in order for it to work. And then also, I'd just like to highlight our online materials. We have an app called Libby. When you have a library card, you can check out free eBooks and free e-audiobooks. And that's what I have.
Thank you. Jamie, I have a question.
Yeah.
Those programs, they can go online and sign up for them? Is it limited numbers? What?
The books?
The programs that you're having, the outdoor programs and the things that fly and, and those, those are, people that want to can go online and sign up for those? Is that?
So you don't need to sign up, you can just show up. So usually I will be somewhere close near the library with music playing. So for examples, for the two activities that aren't Storytimes, I'll usually be out here on the wood tables in front of the library. And then for Storytime, if it's rainy weather, we go to the Green Pavilion over here in the park. If it's good weather, we go over here on the lawn. And then there's no limited numbers. Since it's outdoors, we've been able to accommodate as many people that can come.
Thank you.
Jamie, I have one question.
Yes.
The MiFi, is that in the building or outside of the building?
You can take it outside of the building. You can take it to your home, anywhere in the community where you can usually get GCI service would work. Yeah, so it's something you can check out and take home. If you're interested, get on the waiting list, because it can take a couple weeks to get one, just because of how popular they are.
Great, that's really neat. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're on item number three, good service area report.
Sure, I'm gonna do it from here, throw it back this morning, so I don't want to stay in position, not move around too much. Start off with parks. I'm Kyle Kelly, the Gerwood Service Area Manager, and reports for parks. We want to big thank you to the Gerwood Forest Fair, fairies. They performed their magic in the park at the end of June, doing a cleanup like they typically do during forest fair year, but didn't have a forest fair the follow-up after it. They helped us a lot, and one of the big things they did for us is that we have these old electrical wheels that we put electrical wire on, that they used in the beer garden in over the last year. They've gotten pushed out into the creek, and so they helped us get out of there. Our staff took out about two of them, and then they got the other two out for us, so that was huge. So we thank them for all their efforts out there to improve it. We also want to thank Brad Larson and, it's actually Brad Larson and, oh, I'm drawing a time blank, for his refurbishment of the Gerwood, or the Chair Six for us, to turn them into benches, and, and the efforts that they put forward there. If you go into the skate park now, you'll see there's a new Chair Six in there, a old, refurbished Chair Six, and we're taking out some of the old wood benches, so we appreciate all the efforts that they did there for us. As always, our maintenance staff is out doing trash removal and daily. This weekend was a big one, quite busy out there, and so they had a lot of stuff to deal with today. And Andrew and Brian are the two on our staff out there. They're also working hard on trail projects. You'll find them at Beaver Pond over the coming, next couple of weeks, working on some bridge reinforcement and quite a few projects out there, and then working through our trail network on different things with brushing. And in the park is our hosts, Hart and Kelly. They are, they have two young daughters who are living with them, and they're doing a great job overseeing the park for us this year. And do you want the campground? We did have some bear activity in there, and they've been very, very responsive with each camper coming in to tell them to keep their food out of their tent and, and trying to prevent any more encounters out there. All sport fields and pavilions are available for rent. We just had a wedding this weekend, so it's been very busy out there with that. The hand tram does remain closed for the time, at this time, and we are definitely looking at bridge options for the future. Trails, the Gerwood Trails Master Plan, we still have the comment period open till next Monday, so if you'd like to make a comment on it, you can, there's information right here in the entry hallway, and then online at the GBOS website, you can find a way to comment on the trails plan there and submit your comments by next Monday. We do have a work party this Wednesday. We'll be down on the Lower Beaver Pond. We're gonna meet at 6 p.m. down at the, this Wednesday, at the Railroad Depot area, and then walk out and we're gonna do some brushing. And this will be part of our new agreement with Chugatch State Park. We have a MOU, a Memorandum of Understanding, to do work out there, so we'll be volunteering time out there to brush down that corridor, which gets pretty thick through that area, and maybe do a little bit of drainage work. So it'll be about two hours, so we welcome everybody to come out and help. That is the alternative to Gerwood Trails Committee having their meeting for July. And as always, we like to remind the minder, no dogs or no pets on the, on the baseball field, in the playgrounds and tennis courts. We do have recruiters try to go through, but there are still people playing baseball and sports out there, and it doesn't mix well with pet waste out there. And as, as we go through here, everything is pretty busy. Four Valleys is pulling off a lot of programs, and one right now, they're doing a soccer up there, and we did get some new soccer goals for the field up there, so those are being constructed and put up over the next couple of days. The non, GBOS nonprofit grant cycle is in process, and, and there is a deadline now to turn in your grants for, for this. It's been announced, and we're still working on payment payments for 2021. We just learned today that the person who administrated grants has left within the last month, and so we gave a nudge for whoever's picking it up right now, until a new person's hired, to hopefully get those payments rolling. We're just waiting for legal to finish that, so, so that's the cycle there. And then within our packet, it talks about the different grants that we have and we're working with out there. And as always, Margaret does a great job of keeping up on our social media and websites of the date there, so you can find information about all meetings at the GBOS website, and we try to post and send out notifications in advance for every meeting. Switching over to roads, the Alberg Road Repave Project is pretty much complete. We just have to finish a few, a few things, mostly the crosswalk indicators, those yellow strips you put down, so, so people will be aware that they're coming to a crossstop. But all inlay striping has been finished and guardrail has been completed, and, and that project went really well. It's supposed to be 30 days, we got it done within about 22, and it's just sort of lingered on as we finish up these last two things here as weather allows, so we should have that all wrapped up and completed. And then we'll have some limited drainage work this summer, but the majority of our budget was taken up with paving for the, for the summer, so we'll do a little bit of drainage work, just depending on what we have left, but we always keep a reserve of money in our operating budget for fall, when the rain and ice and snow return. We have to do that maintenance before the new budget cycle starts in January, so. And then major project updates. We were in the pursuit of chasing some CARES funding for, some remaining CARES funding for the Aliaska and High Tower Pathway Rehabs, and also a native vegetation restoration project in Gerwood, so taking out, when the Gerwood Town Square was constructed, a lot of non-native plants were put in there, like, for example, paper birch, where we have typically Kenai birch, and then a lot of like pine trees, when we have sicko spruce here, and they just weren't durable for the weather, so we were pursuing getting some grant funding for that. With the change in administration, that has changed in focus, and the administration is, is more focused on trying to find funding for the replacement of the hand tram with the bridge, and they let me know on Friday that they have about 525,000 available to go towards the bridge replacement. So we are gonna be pursuing that with them, so what most likely will happen is they're gonna come down over the next month administrative, most likely Amy Doboski and Josh Duran, the Director of Parks, Amy's the city manager, and they're gonna present the funding option, the funding opportunity to Gerwood Trails Committee and Land Use and GBOS, and look for, seek approval, a resolution of support for that funding. What it will require is for the service area to also match funds on the other side with the capital dollars. And so we'll talk more about that through the budget process probably tomorrow, as to how we obtain that, but as of right now, we, if we combine that money with what we have in savings, we have about 900,000 to $2 million that we could put towards the bridge, and if things move correctly, we could go and design this winter and possibly assemble next summer, instruct next summer. So we'll give you more details on that as that starts to play out, so. So that's where things are changing at this point in time. In our expenses, our undesignated fund balance is basically our savings account. When we have surpluses, the money falls into this account, and it's not tied to anything that's required, and 298,000 is sitting in that undesignated account right now. That's just up a bit from last year. I think we were in the 260 or 270 range. We didn't have a lot of surplus last year in operating budgets, but we did have some, so it landed there, and that's because of the audit, thought it happened on June 24th there, so that's the most current. And we just paid our first bill to Western for 42,000. I just received another bill today, and then we will receive more as we wrap up. We are doing some negotiation on the final cost for the, for the Alberg project, so we'll receive a few more bills there once we finish up some of the, some of the negotiations about what we'll pay, and we'll, we'll pay. And so, so far, we spent 312,000 on contract expenses for road maintenance this year. Yeah, and overall, our other budgets are right where we are. Our public works, our capital, our public works budget is 40% expended. Our Parks and Rec is 15%. That's because we're paying a lot of bills, and a good portion of that is also when we pay out all the grants. It's $60,000 that goes out, out of that budget, so that, that definitely is a, is a big portion of it. And then police, we're at 49% for the year, and then fire, we're at 72%, but that's because instead of making quarterly payments to the fire department, we make one payment now at the beginning of the year. So that's where we are on everything.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah.
I have one question on the obvious topic, for the, the money that's potentially coming for the, for a bridge of the Glashack Creek. Do you know what this source of that is?
It's remaining CARES Act funds that weren't used for other projects throughout the municipality.
I'm sure we'll hear more about that too.
Yes, they will present it. Yep, it's remaining funds. And now, to keep in perspective, is that all the CARES funding that came into the municipality went to pay for first responders, and so that, what they ended up with is that money dropped into their undesignated account, what they didn't use in their normal operating expenses. So that freed them up from restrictions. what they didn't use in their normal operating expenses. So that freed them up from restrictions as presented. So.
Any other questions from supervisors?
I have one for roads. Alberg Road Repave, I've been on it a few times and it looks really great and the painting's nice as well. And I had community members ask me and it also occurred to me too, that it looks like there's basically no shoulder on the pavement. The stripe is right there at the edge and it's really clean right now, but with just summer traffic, won't more gravel get on the roadbed? And will that be worse in the winter when I know in the winter where the plow is all the way like off the road and we're driving over the stripes and the S-turn is kind of, I was just curious if there was, if that was the exact width that the Alberg was going for, for the pave?
It was the exact replacement of what Alberg was before.
Right.
So we considered putting another foot of shoulder on each side, but that could have been another 200,000 at the time. And we, we got the project just down to what we had in capital. And if you remember with the aspect about this project is that we had a grant that needed to be expended this year from the state. So we were, we were pushing for it to get done. So, so the road was replaced exactly how it was before. And you know, it's a little bit more apparent with those nice white lines, how close the shoulder is on there. But one thing that we did was on the inside corners, we added a foot on each inside corner. And that's where we had all our problems with potholing and things like that. But as the engineers pointed out, he said you could have put a two-foot shoulder on it and people would still drive off the edge of the road, just because people try to cut the corners as much as possible. So, so yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't as wide it was, it would be nice to be, but at the same time, the service area doesn't have a ton of money. So we tried to maximize what we can do in that aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. In the packet, it says that the Alberg Highway Pathway Rehab's, the Verbier Pathway also might be rehabbed. And I was just curious, what part of that was the rehab?
Well, they said that was part of the CARES Act funding that we had originally. Before the end of the last administration, Chris Schutte had reached out to me looking for projects that we could do. And I sent him a ton of projects because they had this money designated for parks and rec. And, and so I sent them several projects of quite a list of them. And they picked out this rehabbing pathways and then this native vegetation project. But once the administration changed, they wanted to focus money towards the Glacier Creek crossing. So we will have to look at that rehab of that bike path in another fashion in probably coming years.
I also have a roads comment question. A couple of people point out the, the extension of paving a little bit further on Timberline. And I think generally it was positive and I heard a why didn't it go all the way to the end? And I'm glad it didn't go all the way to the end by different people. So I just want to say thank you for the extension.
Oh yeah. Yeah, we did that because the turning traffic out of the church was tearing that area up. And so just giving them a little bit more space to turn. The biggest problem you'll find with potholing most of the time is that it's at locations where cars are turning and powering. So when they turn and they power, they tend to kick up the dirt. So top to bottom of Vale, the bottom of Gustad, people turn there and the water just ends up sitting and then it potholes out. So we saw that coming out. So we had a chance to take care of that.
Any other questions? Okay, we will move on to item number four, which is Imagine Girdwood, Girdwood Area Plan update. I don't see anyone else from, oh, actually I do. I see someone from Girdwood Area Plan. Do you want to give the update a moment?
I wasn't totally ready to. Did you have something prepared?
No, I'm just going to mention that we, okay, I'll take it. So the area plan, we got some funding from the assembly and we are, we contracted for another phase of analysis. So we, I'm sorry, I'm taking one step back. So when planning reviewed our, our project proposal a few months ago, they identified that for a comprehensive plan, which this is, there needs to be a bit more analysis of current conditions and forecasting of areas like population growth and housing need. So we allocated some money to a more technical analysis there and we secured a grant and that work has just kicked off. So there will be a meet, at our meeting next Wednesday, Zoom link, it's on Zoom. The Zoom link is available at imaginegirdwood.org. At the meeting next week, the project team will go over what they've done so far, their plans for the remaining of the work, the remaining work. And you know, the committee will provide feedback on that. That's the thing we're working on at the moment. And we're, we're also looking for additional funding to complete the project. Any questions on Imagine Girdwood? Okay, we'll move on to item five supervisor reports. And we'll start with public safety. Jennifer?
Nothing to report. Not had a meeting.
And from the police, what are your public safety director? Do we have our designated?
Thank you.
Hello, please go ahead.
So we're covering, it's my mistake, we're covering me and you. I just wasn't, I wasn't aware of the meeting until a couple hours ago. So I'll do my best here to let you guys know what we've been dealing with here. Alberg, our whole world down from last year, both we made June. I don't have the exact numbers. We had some minor vandalization of the department here. That was actually eight years ago, it's a little bit bigger than the building here. We had two major investigations involving a runaway and, and adult, a minor only, an adult missing, dangerous person. The minor was located, one of our officers that should be able to basically without physical evidence, did and found her being harbored by an adult in acres, they could have been able to hit her up a day later. And that was in May. And the same month, we had a, it was a victim, a witness, it was a victim. And we were unable to find her. They should have found, they grew a home with people, they could try to do about it, it was like, alive. And well, it's, it's a great, June, oh, and many most of our calls were traffic related, either reckless driving, speeding type of things, or people complaining about people speeding. And our response to those, where the, in Timberline, there's a trailhead and we tried to pre-stuff presence, both there and on Timberline in the highway. And then periodically we'll meet individuals that request, you know, speed enforcement to stay in their area that way, 100% likely to do. Then in June, we just had a couple of these, there's adults that were handled that day. We had one felony level investigation that put that person in by contracted workers, involved firearms. So that one is, that was current and other investigation. As part of the, the Alberg construction area, we could increase the visibility there, try and, you know, keep faith for those. Because that shoulder was pretty tight, just to drive on, but see if that's worth it. It's actually, it was actually pretty, pretty intense sometimes. So yeah, we increased our presence in that area as much as we could. But overall, June was extremely, extremely down from, from 2020. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know where to, for, for the reason why that is, one hour notice. But I think it was probably a good one. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board or the public? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, do we have anyone from Public Safety Advisory Committee here? I do not see anybody. Okay, Roads and Utilities, Amanda?
Kyle said it well. The major thing that we've had going is the repaving. And thank you so much, Kyle and Western for getting that done really fast. And it looks great.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to 5C Parks and Rec and Cemetery.
Yes, Kyle thoroughly covered Parks and Recreation. And as he said, Girdwood Trails Committee did not meet in July and that is when they do trail work instead, which is coming up on the 21st at 6 o'clock, meet at the depot. And that will be a great project because Beaver Pond needs that care. Also, you have seven days to comment on the Girdwood Trails Plan. So please, everyone, take a look at that and make your public comment. Cemetery, we had a meeting last Thursday and it was in person. So that went quickly and well. And the update there is that we as a group are going to more thoroughly disperse conversation groups and who to speak to about spreading the word and the initiative that will be on the April 2022 ballot for Girdwood and Eagle River's cemeteries as Anchorage is, is going to be full within seven years. And they're having a renovation. And Eagle River has chosen their, their site, which is off of Highland, off of Yosemite Drive. So we have chosen a location before that. So now we're on the same page as Eagle River. And if anyone has any comments or recommendations or feedback of what groups to speak to in our community, too, please let me know. It's not always an easy topic to discuss, but as a lot of people have known in the last year, they haven't probably gone to funerals or burials and they might be waiting to make those decisions by the time we have opportunity. That's all I have.
Thank you. Can you remind people how to comment and where the information is about the master plan, the Trails Master Plan?
The Trails Master Plan is both on GBOS website, the meeting website, and then the Trails Committee bulletin board out here. And the three bulletin boards here in the library are the best visuals to see it all in one place. And you can comment your own paper here, pick up the paper and comment with your own handwriting, or do it online with those links.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on Parks and Rec or Cemetery from the board or the public? Okay, not saying you. Move on to Fire Department. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start off thanking Chief Weston for meeting with me way before last. I'm new to this department. So she just kind of enough to take a couple hours out and bring me up to speed on their operations over there. Just some highlights here. I believe the chief did meet with the Anchorage Fire Department, new chief Doug Strange, and probably talked everything, Girdwood Fire Department and budgets. And that was good. They met on the 8th and then their Board of Directors had a meeting on the 13th. So we now have full advanced, advanced life saving coverage 24/7 except Wednesdays. And they're working on filling in, you know, filling that gap as well. But that's something new and exciting for the Fire Department. We're looking at increased funding going forward as well in the EMS for the Fire Department. It's going to be about a total of 300,000. So that should really, you know, help the department and the operations over there going forward. And yeah, and I just noticed that they are testing hoses here. I'm sure they, you know, are always looking at those and about 30, 40% of them were aging out. And so they're looking to replace those. And that'll be an estimated 30 to 32K to replace those hoses. So I think that request will come to GBOS at some point in the future. So.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll hand it over to the chief.
Hi there, Michelle Weston. I'm the Fire Chief in Girdwood. As, as Guy mentioned, or as Supervisor Wade mentioned, Doug Shrugge is the new Fire Chief. He used to own a condo in Girdwood. So he is familiar with Girdwood. I also worked with him for years. He was my sort of counterpart. We were both deputy chiefs at AFD. So I know him pretty well. And so, you know, the big push is getting them to sign that EMS contract, which we've been working on for three years. And so the prior administration had agreed to a number of 300,000. We'd asked for 600,000. It had been negotiated down to 300,000. It went to the Assembly. Kyle was able to give me the Assembly documentation to share with the new fire administration who didn't have it. And so we're still, our highest priority is getting that 300,000 approved into the budget. As you know, the community is very full of tourists right now. Hotel's full, everybody's full. And so that increases our sort of responsibility level. And so we did put on ALS coverage as well. So we have four people basically in the station at most times. And then that's augmented by two people we'll grab from the community. So, so we're trying to do a better staffing model. And what that does is, you know, it needs six people, you need six people to run a code, six people or a cardiac arrest event, or six people to start an initial attack on a fire. And so that's helping sort of stabilize us a bit and not have to call Anchorage down to cover us. Along with that, at last, the theme of last week was no sleep. We had a lot of calls in the middle of the night and early morning. A lot of, we've had a lot, seen a lot of critical patients, very, very sick patients that we've been able to transport over the last year or month. We've had some interesting Portage Lake calls. We had two kayakers flip their kayaks in Portage Lake and swim out. They were hypothermic. And then we had another kayaker event a little bit before that where somebody was clinging to a rock, waiting to get rescued and we were able to rescue them. That was a bad weather day. That was also the day that we had people missing on paddle boards in Trinidad and Arm. So we have had quite a number of water rescue calls. And then we did have the missing individual mountain biker who was 70 the other night. That was an eight-hour call for us. But I'm very happy to say that we were able to locate him. And I want to just share with you how incredible that was. And so Powder Hound were wonderful, super wonderful. They came down and said, hey, this guy hasn't come back. He rented a, rented a mountain bike. And his son said, he called him a little while ago and he said he was just 10 minutes away from the trailhead. He hasn't come though. And that was two hours ago. Powder Hound had already gone out and with their bikes and checked all the trails where they thought he was. And they, and then they came in and said, he's not there and we don't know what to do next. Right? So we notified the state troopers. This is about 8 o'clock at night. The state trooper said, well, he's just overdue. He's not really missing. You know, call us back later when he's really missing. So based on that, at that point, you know, you have a decision. Well, I can do nothing and wait till he's really missing or we can go out and search. So we, it was our training night. So we made the decision to go out and search for him. So we went and searched the whole lower Winter Creek area, redid the areas that Powder Hound had checked, and also had Aliaska Resort looking at their imagery to see, because he was a hotel guest. This is a person who was a very accomplished mountain biker. He is 70 years old. He's a dentist and he's super happy with me sharing his story. He had no bear spray, no food, just thin shorts and a jacket on. And he was supposed to be out for an hour. And so no GPS, just the resort, you know, the Aliaska Resort trail map, that was it. So his family couldn't get ahold of him. His family gave me his number. And so we tried to get his number. We tried to get the troopers, the RCC Anchorage Police to try and ping his cell phone to see if we could triangulate. The troopers got a spot, but it was like eight miles away in a totally different area. So we knew that that wasn't accurate unless he had the ability to climb over glaciers. And so what happened was then, you know, we, I called and left a lot of messages on his phone. And of course, he's in a cell phone dead zone. So it's going to message us, right? And I texted him. So about, so this, you know, this started at 8 o'clock at 12:30 at night, when I'm walking my dog up the road, trying to see, trying to clear the path between the resort and Powder Hound to see. Because I thought, well, maybe in his e-bike, he's gone off into the woods and he's under a bottle of brush and we just can't see him, right? And we have crews still out at this point in time. The phone rings and it's him, which was amazing. And he said, hey, you, you left me a message and I think I do need help. And I said, where are you? And he goes, I just crossed a log over a creek. And I said, well, could you, and he's like, and I think I have altitude sickness because I'm really woozy. And I said, okay, could you send me your coordinates? Right? You know, don't move because obviously you're now in cell range. Don't move. Send me your cell coordinates. And so he's, so he's like, oh, so I was going to hang up. You send me your cell coordinates. And I sent him, I pinged him like, this is how you do. And I sent him, I pinged him, like, this is how you do find my SAR, this is how you do, you find your GPS coordinates. And then nothing happened. Absolutely nothing happened. And so I called him back and I texted him, nothing. Couldn't get ahold of him again. So it's now one o'clock at night. I know he's just crossed over a log by a creek, that's all I know. So based on that, we go back and we triangulate where we thought he was last seen, and Powder Hound had talked to people, which was, you know, lower Winter Creek. And so we decided, well, you know, and when I'm talking to him, I was saying, can you see, he's like, I think I'm on North Base, too. That's the other thing he said in this little 30-second call. And I said, well, can you see the resort? He goes, no. So just this log and this creek. So we figured, well, maybe he's on Upper Winter Creek, that would make sense, right? So we send out another crew to walk in, Upper Winter Creek, and at four o'clock in the morning, get a call on the radio, and they said, hey, we found a log over a creek. Wow. And then they, but we called for him and we can't hear. And at this point also, concurrently with the crew going out, I'm talking to the troopers and talking to the RCC and trying to get them to launch the para-rescue team out of Anchorage with the Pave Hawk. And they're like, well, you know, looking at the map, well, we don't know if we're going to accept the mission, blah, blah, blah. Okay, we're going to come in, because when you call for a Pave Hawk, they actually have to come in, and then they have to spool up, accept the mission, check the weather, all those things. So it's not a quick event. And so they're like, okay, we're about to launch in probably like 20 minutes. So in the meantime, they go, we found the log. So I tell them, hey, we found the log. Then they go, but we called, we haven't heard anything. Then they cross the log over the creek, they call again, don't hear anything. They go a little further in the woods, all of a sudden, the radio back, someone's yelling back to us. Amazing, super amazing. And they found him, so at 4:13, they actually found him. He was unable to walk out because he had a significant leg injury. And so then we launched the Pave Hawk to come back and extricate him, and our crew got back out of the field at 6:00 AM, and he's alive. Super amazing, yeah, but he's a, it was his 50th wedding anniversary, so, yeah. So just a super cool story about how it was fabulous and it worked out. Now, I know we've, Kyle, we've had lots of conversations about, you know, is this a fire thing or a SAR thing, and somebody else should do it, and yeah, right, it would make sense. But, you know, I think that what we need to develop in Girdwood is a local, you know, take the CERT group, but expand it out. There's a lot of people in Girdwood that have really good trail knowledge and sort of make our own little trail ground search team that can help with us, right? It worked really well that night because we had, it was our training night, we had lots of staffing, but on a normal night where there's maybe four of us, we wouldn't have had all that people to draw from. So I think that as we develop the trail system and we get this world-class trail system in place, we need to have a group of ground search volunteers that can help, that know the trail system and that can help search effectively immediately. And so, yeah, so for me, you know, I've been on a lot of searches. I've been on searches with my dog, and this was just a very positive sort of experience, so. Okay, so back to fire stuff, but I thought that was a good story to share, right? And sort of points to the point of why we need to have, I think, more trail system, because it's great to call, oh, we're going to call AMRDN to come in, but they're going to be two hours before they deploy in, and they might know, not know the trail system, whereas we, I think, all collectively know the trail system. And so if you had said, you know, if I had been a SAR guy from Anchorage and you said to me, oh, it's a creek over a log, would I have known, oh, that's not North Base, that's Winter Creek, right? And as it turned out, what the guy did is, he was on the e-bike and he just didn't see the sign. That's why he kept going, right? He didn't see the turn. So that's what happened, so. Pretty amazing. So he's texting like four or five times a day. We're pals now. So we had a community event on June 28th hosted by CERT and Girdwood Fire, so we had the quake trailer down from the state, also the emergency operations bus. State Fire Marshal came, troopers came with their recruitment guy, Office of Voting Safety with the life jackets and bear wear. It was kind of sparsely attended, but you know, it was beautiful, like today. So we're going to have another winter one and then have another one next year. Our staffing model, as we mentioned, we have, you know, we're actually, you know, we have a critical need for engineers and ALS coverage, so we bumped up their pay so that when they go on a call, they're getting paid a better wage than the $11 an hour they get for training, and all of that is wrapped into that $300,000 in that contract. We had two firefighters attend the VLT symposium. We have an upcoming September Fire Training Conference in Fairbanks, which is the state conference. We've got three firefighters in the Fire Instructor Class in Anchorage, which we get for free, which is a super good deal for us. We've got four fighters, firefighters in the AFD Company Officer Class, which we also get for free, good deal for us. Two firefighters completed hazmat technician, free, AFD being nice to us again. We do have an upcoming ALS class for EMT3s. We have four firefighters being trained as engineers. We are starting a firefighter one class and hazmat ops class this fall, and then we're going to have a firefighter two class in spring, which will cost a little bit of money. And then, yeah, the hose. So AFD, both AFD and us discovered that 30% of our hose had become delaminated, so when you looked at it, it looks like a belly button inside, it's not jacketed the way it should be. So what that means is there's not really good fire flow and it can, it's an automatic thing that condemns the hose and you can't use it according to NPA. So both them and us have a large upcoming bill. We estimate our part will be $30,000. Usually with hose, I try and steal stuff from AFD, like, oh, we're short hose, can I borrow some? They don't have the hose to borrow now because they've also had to put their hose out of service. So that's why the hose purchase. Also, hose is supposed to last 10 years, supposed to take it out of service. Our hose is 15 to 20 years, so we're getting a really good life out of it, and this new hose that AFD and us will purchase will have a warranty on it, so we won't have this delamination issue. I think that's it for me. Any questions? That was a lot.
Chief, I have a question about that additional funding. I think you said that some of that supporting your new ALS and your more coverage with that, what are some other projects or things that that additional funding will support?
So it is EMS funding. So what we discovered over the last three years is that AFD had been underfunding EMS, so basically our fire funding had used to, had been used to support, fire taxation had been used to support a lot of that, and so it's sort of righting the ship from that. And the funding hadn't really been increased in almost a decade, basically, and so you can imagine as our call volume increased, the EMS funding didn't increase. So as a normal contract, you would think, oh, you know, they're increasing their service and they've got more things and we're going to pay them more. Nope. The AFD contract way was like, good luck to you, right? So that meant that the service area, fire service area had to pick up everything. So it's kind of righting that ship a bit. The other thing is what we have historically done is we've had a fire captain that's been doing ALS, too, so you can imagine you're trying to run a code and also be the fire captain, or you're trying to do command the extrication at a vehicle accident, but also be the highest level of medic. It just doesn't work. You can't have one person do everything. They can try, they have been trying for many years, just not, it doesn't work that well, so. Because then once they have to jump in the ambulance, go to town, oops, we have no fire captain anymore, so. Anyway. Okay, any other questions?
I do have a question about staffing. I know you've covered the, we now have ALS staffing. What do the overall numbers of staffing look like? Are we still short of people? Are we okay?
We're still short. I mean, it's a constant revolving door of people because we train people really well and then everybody wants to drop them away, right? So we're in, and then we have a number of people that, you know, life happens, and so they are taking time off for life events. So we do need to recruit another eight this fall, right? Hiring a number of people, summer hires, you know, to be on shift 24/7 for those two days a week has been sort of been good, because, you know, as I was trying to explain to other people, you know, it's, we're based on who's left in the valley is who I'm going to call, right? Unless I compel people to come down. And part of the, part of that long-term strategy of improving the $11 an hour when you go on a call, but the rest of the time when you're sitting in Girdwood, you're not getting paid, you know, if we can increase that to a better wage, I think that because a lot of, a core part of our department lives in Anchorage, it'll be, we're competing with, things are going on in Anchorage, things are going on in their life, spouses, other fun things, you know, and so then we're asking them, oh, come down and do extra shifts, you're not getting paid to drive down here, you're not getting paid to sit in the station for those six hours, but, you know, if we can actually say, well, you're going to go to a call, you might get, ooh, $18 an hour, that might at least pay for your gas down here, right? So I think that that will kind of help a little bit. Otherwise, you know, we've, we've done very well, I think, in the past 20 years, expecting people to volunteer their time to come out, and as it's shifted to people in Girdwood can't afford to volunteer, you know, we've had those, the Anchorage people that are great, and we're getting them because they want experience, because they want to go somewhere else, be it medical school or AFD or another career department, but it's not sustainable, right? So we just get them trained up really good and then they pop off to medical school, which is wonderful, super good, but.
Good if they come back.
Good if they come back, yeah.
And one other question, which is, I've been seeing recently, the last few days in particular, there's seemed to be a lot of issues around emergency departments being closed in capacity. Can you?
Yes. So the emergency departments are super full. At the Medical Advisory Board meeting last month, they talked to us about it, that's the meeting of all the doctors in the hospitals and the fire command staff. The hospitals have staffing shortages right now, and then they're just incredibly busy. And COVID's, you know, come up a little bit, too. So all those things are happening at once, perfect storm, and so the hospitals right now are on rotation. What that means is, we'll get a patient, the patient will say, I want to go rob, right? And we'll go, okay, patient wants to go rob, and dispatch will say, you're going to AMC. That's your choice, right? You don't have a choice. So when they're all on rotation, you don't really have a choice, so you get who's up next. And so the hospital's very busy. Regional, I think, two days ago, had to convert their ambulance bay into a crouched area, right? So things are, things are very busy. Most of the patients you're seeing with COVID are getting, there's COVID patients in the ICUs, those are, a majority of those patients are people who aren't vaccinated, unfortunately, and so those are, that's kind of that demographic, and they're a younger demographic as well. And so there are patients still in there, in there with COVID. And then, yeah, so short amounts of time, there's no room anywhere for patients. They're working on decompression. I probably talked about this for hours since I went to AMC, but yeah, very busy right now. And so I think for us, what I'm telling the medics is you need to have patience and patience with dispatch, because our medics will fight to the death that you will go to the right hospital that you want to, and then dispatch will be like, but you have to go here, and they'll be like, I want to go to the patient there, right? So especially with us, with a 45-minute transport time, right? So we're trying to say, okay, well, in 45 minutes, we're checking in, and that's going to be not AFD dispatchers.
So now is not a good time to have accidents at all?
No, it's not a good time. It's never a good time. It's not that they're not giving you great care. The gentleman that I just spoke about recently, he was in and out super quickly, right? He said it was fabulous. He was in and out, fastest he's ever been in a hospital. So, you know, they're given good care, it's just.
Perhaps they're motivated.
They're super busy.
Thank you very much for your question. It was a very long, very informative.
Sorry, sorry.
No, no, very, very informative and helpful. I'm glad the rescue worked out the way it did. Thanks again. Any other questions? If not, we will move to land use. I'm actually going to ask if, let's see, our land use chair here, want to give a quick talk on the land use meeting? Kevin.
Hello, everybody. Kevin McDermott, land use chair. We had a fairly well-attended meeting for a summer meeting in person. I think we have about, almost 20 with everybody in there. And, you know, I know a number of these items you'll go over tonight, but two things I wanted to hit on that we covered in the last land use meeting was, let's see, there was the, one thing we voted on was for the Alpine View Estates Phase Three. We didn't really, this is Tim Cabana's development, we didn't have great information on that, so we didn't really have much to go on with that vote, and I'm not sure if this evening you'll have more information for that, but we did make a motion to, to, let's see, have a resolution to support move on to Board of Supervisors based on his previous presentations. The other thing that we kind of, we spent the most time on last meeting was about the, let's see, well, it was a couple of things, but related to the accessory dwelling units. And so we had a number of people at the meeting that really hadn't attended meetings before, kind of like the previous meeting, and we really had a long discussion about the benefits, you know, the pros and cons of these accessory dwelling units. And ultimately, the committee voted to send a resolution of, or a support, was that what we did, to move on to the Board of Supervisors, and it wound up being 16 in favor, two opposed, and four abstentions. So that was sort of a reversal of the previous meeting. And, you know, and I know you guys are going to go over that this evening, if you had any questions about that or, you know, what we went over in the meeting. Of course, Mike was there, but I'd be happy to answer questions on that. Those are the two big items that spent, you know, we spent most of the time on in the land use. Anything else you can think of, Mike, or any questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you. So update on Title 21, Chapter 9, we did not have a meeting this month. Parking ordinance has been approved in our local meeting, so we petitioned out with planning. As a working group, we did have a meeting last week. We covered several issues. We talked about housing action plan will be probably going ahead later this year, at least kicking off later this year, and we had quite a long discussion about the, what we could ascertain from the RFP proposal for the Holden Hills and Aliaska Village areas. I know there'll be more, more about that over the next month or two. I think that's it. Any, any questions on Title 21, Chapter 9, on as a working group? If not, we will move on to public comments. Person offering public comments must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a public comment tonight? I'm not seeing anybody, so we'll move on to all business. Gender item LUC 2007-04, update on the command case 2020-97, to be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August the 9th, 2021, to reevaluate the findings adopted by Planning and Zoning under Resolution 202025 in J3 Development Conditional Use. So this is the, the conditional use which was granted to the developers of Powder Run to increase the density of housing from under six units or under four units per acre to eight units per acre. So they're moving from a by right five units to a conditional use of nine units. Planning and zoning gave the conditional use. There was an appeal, Board of Adjustments in March, heard that appeal and found a number of problems with planning and zoning process and findings, so they remanded it back to Planning and Zoning on basically three issues. I have them in front of me. They were two sort of technical issues. One is there was a claim about a need for housing in Girdwood, which although we all know is true, wasn't actually supported by any documentation. There was a request that GBOS had made that some of the voluntary conditions which the Powder Run developers had agreed to would actually be explicitly listed in the conditional use permit, and they were not. Planning and zoning did not add them to their conditional use permission. So the Board of Adjustment asked them to be added back, and then the main one, which is going back to Planning and Zoning, is that the developers did not, in the opinion of the Board of Adjustment, provide enough evidence about the traffic impact, the traffic, noise, dust impact to Spraw Run based on the anticipated uses. And they also did not provide any documentation, they couldn't access the site from Gunny Sack or from Aliaska. They made the statement they could, but there was no evidence behind that. So they're the, they're basically the main things that's going to be, that's going to go back for a month. go back for a month or four. There is documentation online and we'll make sure there's a link in the, in the minutes to that. Any, any particular discussions? I mean, we did, we, GBOS did write a letter opposing the conditional use in the past. So we are, we definitely, if we wished to, could, could do so for the April, sorry, the August hearing on those limited issues.
So what's the process now? Do we have to, do we have to wait for this study to be developed and presented back? If we do write a letter, does it need to happen before the August meeting?
Yes. So there's basically a public hearing and I've forgotten the date again, was it August sixth, August ninety-nine? On August the ninth, there'll be a public hearing on these limited issues. And the public or, you know, any review body like GBOS can submit comment to that. And then after the public hearing, Planning and Zoning will discuss it and basically issue their recommendations on these issues, on these limited issues.
Is that letter already in their packet?
The previous letter is, yes. The original one is, yes, yes. But if we wanted to, we could address, if we had any opinions or thoughts on these limited, on these particular limited topics, we could, we could respond to those. But that, that's the only topic they're going to be covering, or just those three topics. Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience? I mean, I, I personally have some observations on it, but I think unless we want to act as a board, I'll just respond as an individual. Okay. So if there's no further discussion, we can move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number seven, agenda item LUC 2103-05, request for GBOS resolution of support regarding case 2021-067. Request for rezone to modify the zoning district boundary and special limitations for track B to B Alpine View Estates Phase Three. Planning and zoning hearing is scheduled for August the second. This is a project which Tim Cabana is, is proposing, who is the applicant for. Do we have any, Kyle, do we have any feedback at all from the presenter?
No. Well, he's fishing, so he couldn't be here tonight, but I can bring up the packet here. And basically, what has happened is through a, let me see if I can turn it. There we go. He has received approval with conditions to subdivide the parcel. And what we're looking at here, I'll blow it up a bit, is this is the parcel right here. It's called, it was referred to as GR4 zoning. And so just give reference as to where we are. This is Glacier Creek. So if you're to leave this building, go out, take a right, you go over the Glacier Creek Bridge. And right when you cross the bridge, you see there's a driveway that basically leads up to a lot where there's a lot of grub right now from vegetation that's been taken out. And that's this parcel. So this parcel is close to the brewery. There's actually another parcel in between here and the brewery itself, off to the right. And their request, and what's in front of us today, is that they're going to, I believe, P&amp;Z, sorry, I'm just looking to make sure I know where they're going to. They actually might be going to the Plating Board. Oh, no, Planning and Zoning hearing. And so they're looking to change the zoning for this little bump right here. Currently, that is a GR4 SL zoning. And what it does is it interferes with the way they have subdivided these lots in here. And they like to change it to it being one zoning, which is GR4 Gerwood Residential Four zoning. So that would change this bump out right here. It would also establish an easement along the backside here, which is required to have an easement through this parcel and also shared with the other parcel here that could be access road someday. The Gerwood Area Plan currently shows within it that this parcel is, it's slated, or it's been proposed to have a second access road go through it that would serve Gerwood for the upper valley. You know, there's a long road ahead on that. If that was ever to happen, that second access road would stay on this side of the creek and go all the way out to Aliaska Highway. But since it's within the Gerwood Area Plan, the Gerwood Area Plan has not been updated or changed at this point in time. You know, the process is going on right now. They still have to show that there's an easement through this parcel that allows the, the road to go through if the road was ever to be built. So, so the, those would be the two things that would change with this rezone is this bump out here would be changed to GR4 and then the easement would be showed here through this area.
Do you, could you provide a very quick summary of what the difference is between GL4 and GL4 SL?
Oh, boy. I knew you were going to ask that. I can't, I have to pull up the, the regulations on, or the, excuse me, the code, which I can try to do real quick.
I think that was, if I recall correctly, that was a point of confusion at the land use as well, I think.
Uh, somewhat, yeah, we need to really clarify what the SL was. But the major thing up is that the, I think there might be two lots that are affected by that bump and an individual lot gaining that to zoning requirements. So that's what Tim was trying to eliminate that bump of those two lots. And then in the pack, I think it shows how we've got the lots subdivided yet, but that way those lots can be all under one zoning. I can pull up the, let me do that real quick here. Sorry. He owns the whole, proposed subdivision. And so that, you have that whole track here at the, well, he owns the whole of all this. Yeah. Like this area of GR4. That's the issue is that this is that, you have to, rest.
Mike, you had mentioned, or Kevin had mentioned some data gaps during your discussion the other night about this. The zoning, were there other ones that you guys were missing information on that would help to make those?
I'll let Kevin speak to this. So this is what the lots would look like in this area? So you can see how this bump out comes in, currently that current zoning goes through there. And so they're looking to eliminate that bump out so that this whole parcel that's subdivided is one zoning. Let me see if I can.
So it looks like.
I'll go back there. Sorry, I gotta work up. It's hard to see here, but I think, I think lots are about an acre. They're about someone whole time family.
So it looks like it affects three lots across the bottom.
Yes.
Three lots there?
Yeah, three lots. So that line would actually mimic what's here. The new zoning line would go right along this baseline here. I'll bring it back up.
But you know historically what the reason of the two zoning is? Is it wetlands or?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
I think it was, there was a grove of trees right here that they just went around when they drew the land, the line. It goes like that. And I don't know if this one shows the aerial.
In the packet, there's some.
Maybe.
Aerial.
Actually, there is something in the packet. Let me see if I can get to that.
Yeah, there's, this page is in the packet.
The colored one.
The colored one.
Sorry. There we go. So you can see it here. See that, can we see that blue line up there? Is it hard to see? I'll put my cursor on it, but it goes like this. You can see how the line goes. So his request is kind of like this. It just goes straight across. And that new, that new parcel that is subdivided out would have these trees in the back of its lot.
So just to clarify, your understanding is that the only reason for that bump was that group of trees?
In my interpretation, we've had nobody who's like, was involved when these are lines have clarified. We didn't have confirmation. But just looking at the way the group of trees are, that's the way I, I would say they drew the line. And one point here is we invited the petitioner to attend and we asked, kept asking for, do they want to request something of the GBOS? Because usually most petitioners who are going through this process will request a resolution of support. But we never actually got confirmation back from, from Tim that he was requesting anything. His wife, Barry, was here, but she didn't know much about the project. And so, but I don't think at that meeting, she actually requested a resolution of support. The resolution was made by somebody at LUC. So, so it wasn't, we haven't heard anything directly from the petitioner saying, this, this is just part of our process in the sense of that when these packets come in, we always put them out for public review through land use and GBOS in case people, one, to make people aware of it, and then two, you know, it does allow for the community to give feedback to the Planning and Zoning Department if they do have feedback that they want to give. And so, so coming out of LUC, somebody made a motion for a resolution of support. That did pass and that's come up to GBOS now for a recommendation for a resolution of support to GBOS.
So that's where we stand at the moment.
That's where we stand at the moment.
LUC is, although the petitioner hasn't, LUC has recommended we provide a resolution of support.
And let me dig in here and see if I can find the code.
So I can find, I found the, in the packet, the Assembly Ordinance from two thousand and seven lists what the special limitations are in the GR4 SL area. And it basically says there's, there should be a seventy-five foot stream setback, except where adjacent to our plans, in which case the setback should be twenty-five feet. That's probably superseded by changing the Title 21 sentence. And then also, due to stream wetland or other environmental considerations, density on the two and a half acre, I mean, area two shall be limited to maximum of eight dwelling units per acre and subject to administrative site plan review. It's not clear where exactly that is, or whether that's the section which stays as GL4 SL or whether that's the section which would change. So it really doesn't give us that much clarity. Oh, actually, yes, it does give some clarity. It's, it looks like it is the, the wetland area two which it mentions is part of the area which would change. So it would remove some protections from that load, from the bump out.
So just to clarify, it's not saying this is a wetland. It's just saying it's part of the protection of a wetland.
Yes.
Okay.
Whether SL is actually highland, that's the, well, except for the SL, SL. I was just going to add, although he's not, Mr. Cabana's not here tonight or last week, he came to almost every meeting over the winter to talk about this in a very long-winded way. But it was the same story about the trees and wanting to address it, but nothing really, really specific. So I think that's why someone finally did something last week for land use. But I think an eventual support is likely.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to write a resolution of support in this case. Anyone wish to move that?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay. So we do have a draft resolution of support available in the packet. We'll try and read it. I'll let that you draw.
Resolution 2021-16, resolution of support for rezoning for track B to B Alpine View Estates Phase Three. Whereas the Gerwood Land Use Committee has heard presentations from the landowner of track B to B on several occasions as this project has been under consideration prior to development. And whereas in order to develop this parcel effectively, rezoning to modify the current zoning district boundary is needed. And whereas reconsideration of the location of secondary access, which is currently located through this parcel in planning documents, is needed. And whereas opening up this area for development will add eight new lots up and up XX potential new homes to Gerwood's tight housing market. And whereas special consideration of the second access route has been supported through the Gerwood Land Use Committee and the Gerwood Board of Supervisors, which is documented in Resolution of Support 2020-15. Resolution of support of variants of secondary access road through Alpine View Estates Track B to B. And whereas the Gerwood Land Use Committee supported this action, supporting proposed rezoning for track B to B and for special limitations of the track by a vote of nine in favor, one opposed, and ten abstaining. Therefore, the Gerwood Board of Supervisors resolves supporting, support for rezoning as presented in the petitioner's application and for the special limitations of track B to B Alpine View Estates Phase Three, passed and approved by a vote of XX to this day of July 2021.
Thank you. Did we get any clarity from the petitioner about what they're actually claiming in terms of housing?
No.
Okay.
His response was that this looked great. But I didn't receive any input.
Well, we've been, land use passed it and we've been asked to, we've been asked to support it. I don't feel that we really got enough information to, I don't personally feel like I have enough information to have looked into it and make a kind of really educated decision on this. And because the petitioner hasn't actually really requested it, I'm tempted not to support it. But mostly because I'm not really clear that it's either required or, or is well-understood. I don't, I'm not necessarily opposed. I just don't really quite understand the, the cost and benefits of this particular issue.
I would agree. Having sat through a number of these presentations, there has been also some variation on what's presented and what matters more than some other things. So I would, I think, I think there are lingering questions, even if it is a great idea.
Any other thoughts or comments from the?
Well, I just have a question. If they are zoned too different, if they're, you know, zoned differently on those, each individual lots, the lots, the whole lot can be developed or just that portion of the lower lot can't be developed? Do we know, you know, I mean, is it preclude any development until they're zoned the same?
I do not know for sure. I think it's, I think it has, actually, I just don't know. I'm not going to speculate.
I imagine that if it's not rezoned, then that parcel, if you plot it that way, it's just going to have this weird thing in the back.
That can't be developed or whatever the case.
But I think it also affects, I didn't correct me or wrong, I think I understood that it affects how he can develop it too because of the overall size of it.
Right.
Develop a lot, like if the lot is the same, if you have two different zoning in it, then it, it changes how, what you can put on. I mean, what do I know, much as other people here do.
You lose that acreage.
You have to have certain size lots to do certain things with them, yeah.
Yeah. I think.
Yes. That's true, at least. I don't know about for a GR4. Not familiar with that specifically, but.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, from the audience, the community?
I, I actually have a question. If, if this doesn't pass, well, are there specific questions that can be asked? Is it even our job to come up with those questions so we can make a more informed vote?
We probably don't have time to take another vote on this unless we convene a, a special meeting or something. I think what we're. I think what we would do is follow our procedure for when there's a disagreement between land use and GBOS, and just send both to planning and zoning, and just explain the reasoning for it. So the reasoning, I think, if I was gonna summarize where we are now, I think we don't quite know enough to support it, and it's not something which the petitioner has asked for. So, please, Brendan.
Could you also, if you didn't want to vote against it, but also if you want to vote for it, just sort of basically table the motion?
We could table a motion, I think if anyone wished to move to table a motion.
I'll move the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll move to table the motion, yeah.
I heard a second as well. I don't recall if we need a third for this, I'm not, I could ask a parliamentarian.
I would probably say that it'd be safe, yes, but I've never tabled a motion before, so I would have to look that up, but.
I'll, I'll third the motion to table.
Sounds like it's. So if we need, if we need three, we've got three, just in case.
Yeah.
So I think we, I think we would actually, let's see, I think actually, I think the requirement would be to withdraw the initial motion of approval, and then move to table. So if the initial mover is in agreement with that.
Yep.
We can do it without going through a formal process. So we would just have the motion entered table. And I can't remember who.
I moved.
You moved, okay. You in agreement?
I moved in agreement, yes.
And it's the second in agreement as well?
I think.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Right, so, so my understanding is we're now in a position where we, where the motion to approve this is being withdrawn, we now have a motion in front of us to table it, so is there any discussion on the motion to table? Not hearing any of that's.
No, I guess not on the motion to table, do we need to make, like I, you know, mentioned earlier, come up with some, you know, what our questions are and present those to the landowner?
I think the issue was that his meeting is on August 2nd.
Yeah, it's on August 2nd.
And so that's why it's timely that we either move or we move on, I guess.
Yeah, so what we're effectively doing is we're deciding as a body to not take a position on this.
Okay.
And by doing so, because there is a time limit, it will effectively expire. The petitioner has not asked for a support, so us not providing a support doesn't appear to be a material damage to them.
Okay, yep, no, I agree with that, I would like to learn more about it, you know, before I made a vote on it.
Well, I think it's administrative action, isn't it, so there isn't even a public hearing, if I remember correctly.
No, public hearing scheduled for August 2nd.
Oh, there is, sorry, there is a public hearing, so there is an opportunity in that case to go to the, to go to the meeting and speak in that meeting, if anyone has opinions. We just won't have a formal GBOS position for that. Okay, any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote, and this has to be a roll call, so.
Okay, will we do a roll call?
Yeah.
Mike Geddington?
So this is for the tabling, yes.
Tabling the motion. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Windgard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 to table the motion.
So this item is tabled. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight, Girdwood Bearware requests. There are two items here, one is to discuss a potential vote regarding code enforcement changes to the Secure Trash Regulation Zone Ordinance, and the second, second subitem is an update on the IGBC, Interagency Grizzly Bear Committee Certification of Bear-Resistant Cans, which are available in Girdwood.
Hi, everybody.
Nina?
It's nice to see you all, finally, and yeah, Kyle has got my presentation. So I actually put together a presentation, because I wanted to give you a more formal update, since you did provide funding for Wind River's presence here, so I just wanted to kind of run through, you can go to the next one, Kyle.
Yep.
Really quick, just a recap of Wind River Bear Institute's time here, and then also kind of go over our bearware program of work. We're actually quite busy, we were busy last year, we're quite busy this year, and then finally, I do want to give you an update on the Secure Trash Regulation Zone Ordinance, and some conversations that we're having with IGBC and other stakeholders on the current defective cans that we've got on the streets from Alaska Waste. So just to recap, Wind River Bear Institute was here under contract with Girdwood Bearware from June 12th through the 23rd. Niels and his dogs were really very busy when they were here also. When Niels is here, he's pretty much on the clock 24/7 with a short window for sleep. Him and his dogs hop in the truck, and they basically spend almost all of their time here on patrol. And while Niels is on patrol, he's busily interacting with members of the public, because his truck is so visible, and what he does is so visible, he gets flagged down a lot, and so he's a great voice for our shared mission, and also just for explaining what he does. So while he was here, he gave one presentation, which is this photo, and that was coincided with Fish and Game to do bear spray training. He also, let's see, what else do I have here? There were two news stories, I don't know if you've caught them, that covered his time here, if you want to look those up, they were really interesting. You can scroll through, I've got a picture as well, while I'm talking. So this is a photo of the bear spray training, Fish and Game provided that with inert bear spray for folks, that was a, I think, a big draw for the presentation, and this is just a picture of his dogs on duty in response. While he was here, he was accompanied for a couple days by two different biologists, this is Dick Schidler, who works with the Alaska Department of Fish and Game out of Fairbanks, and then Craig, I can't remember his last name.
Perham.
What is it?
Perham.
Yes, Perham, who's a biologist actually with BoM, what's the, what is that agency? Bureau of Energy and Ocean Management, I think? So they, each individually are members of Wind River Bear Institute and have their own Carillion bear dogs, so at once, a couple different times while Niels was here, there were actually all of these dogs patrolling our streets. So it was, it was a fun time for them, this is again in partnership with Alaska Department of Fish and Game and Girdwood Bearware. We were really pleased with the time he was here, felt successful, and we're looking forward to his full write-up when he is done with that. Just as a final photo, this is a picture, if you can kind of see it's hard in the light, there's two little black specks running up Alieska here, off in the far right of the picture, and that's Niels' truck, that is two bears, that's a sow, black bear, and her second-year cub. Those bears came through town all the way over from Timberline, and we had them on the run the whole way, moving at bear speed, but definitely moving, until we brought them up here at Alieska, and that's where we dropped them off. So that's exactly what Niels is supposed to be doing when he's here, and it was fun to see some successful events like this, for sure.
Are the dogs out all the time at this point, or?
The dogs are in the truck the entire time.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're in the car, they're barking away. So that's a short recap of what we did with Niels, so to move on to the regular Girdwood Bearware program of work, we are busy with outreach and education and attractant management, so this is just a recap of our publications. We had a grant from Kenai Mountain Ternigan Arm Heritage Foundation to produce these publications, and we've got these in circulation, it's the first time we've had Girdwood-specific bearware materials to get out in rentals and get signs out, so we've dispersed those far and wide, if you know anyone who wants them, please send them our way, they are free. So, yep, you can scroll down. So this is what we do on the daily, we pick up garbage a lot, and we're happy to do it, you know, if we're out there picking up garbage, it means that a bear is not gonna come back and get it, and also we're securing garbage hopefully before a bear can get it. So that's me picking up garbage in the woods after I move the bear out of there. We got a call for the trash, that was drunk out there on the bike path on the way to the school, and then I'm sure that some of you follow us on Facebook, this is the dumpster at Creekside, that bear actually was able to pull the plastic lid off, because Alaska Waste doesn't service their dumpsters regularly enough, and their screws get rusty, and bears somehow seem to know that every single time. So, that was that. Can we see this? This is really displeasing to see, of course, can't tell you how many times we've stood up on top of these dumpsters or re-appropriated garbage bags that look like this before they be, we see them when they look like they do on the right, and we don't want them to look like they do on the left. Actually, I can say that the only, that is, I think, two, one of two times that we've had a bear get into dumpsters all summer, is that picture on the left. And we have one person who's actually paid on contract this year, and so we've been really on it with dumpster patrols, she brings a ladder, and she brings gloves, and we basically redistribute garbage before it becomes a problem. Again, these are problems that we are fixing, if you can believe it, people actually leave trash like that on the dumpsters. So yeah, she is also busy putting up signs, after we redistribute the garbage and close the dumpster, we really don't want people to continue to fill it before it gets picked up, so. We're also busily responding actively, that means that if someone calls and says they have a bear in their garbage right now, we will show up and move that bear. That is what happened in this picture on the right, a neighbor called and said, "I've tried my hardest to get this bear off this garbage, and he will not leave," and so I showed up and he left. We are actually permitted this year, if you scroll down, we are permitted under the Alaska Department of Fish and Game to haze bears. We are very rarely hazing bears, usually if you show up with your car and you yell at a bear, they will move, but we are permitted to use slingshots and metal ball bearings to actually haze bears, and we are doing that, and it is effective. It's been a great relationship working with Fish and Game, we've come a long way, our area bear biologist, Dave Battle, has said that what we are doing is invaluable, and he acknowledges that Fish and Game can't get here, they're an hour away, so when someone has a problem and they call us, you know, we're five minutes away, so he's pretty pleased. These are just fun pictures of us working with bears. Again, more trash management, that's most of what we do. We're also still operating our unwelcome mat loan program, this is a free program, we have two, and a third one on the way, of electrified unwelcome mats, this is a passive deterrent for bears, you set up the unwelcome mat and it delivers a shock, this bear has been shocked by this mat, and you can see, looks down, and knows what it sees, and that's all it takes now, and that was that for that bear. I did actually, just interestingly, get a call from someone from Rainbow today, that's my first kind of out-of-service area call, who's interested in the unwelcome mat in Rainbow, where they're having bear problems. I didn't even know Rainbow was a place, I mean, it's like a spot, but apparently it's a community too. So moving on, we've been working with the municipality of Anchorage to update the Secure Trash Regulation Zone language, as far as we know, they're supportive of, the one change we asked for was to allow code enforcement to be able to post citations directly on site. It's my understanding that they believe they can do that without making an amendment, although they are planning to still make that amendment. Right now, we ask for clarifications to be made about what actually the definition of a bear-resistant container is, and the reason for that is because of the situation with the residential bear-resistant trash cans, which have a defect, it's a manufacturer's defect, so they are not bear-resistant to the degree that they should be, and bears are accessing them with regularity. So we're looking forward to continuing that conversation topic, if you scroll down one more. So this is the definition in the ordinance right now at the top in bold, this is how they define what a bear-resistant container should mean, it's a container that meets the requirements for such a container as certified by the Interagency Grizzly Bear Committee, or IGBC, or the equivalent or greater as certified by the waste management provider. And so you can probably think on your own why we find there to be improvements there to be made, but at this point, Alaska Waste has provided reasoning or excuses for why they think that their current residential can is still sufficient to meet the rubric of this definition, and our perspective is even if the ordinance is not amended, it's still, the cans on the street do not meet this definition still. Alaska Waste has said that they're covered because they also received a WildSafe BC certification for their cans, however, that certification was only tested for black bears, not brown bears, and IGBC is for black and brown bears, so that does not meet the quote-unquote equivalent or greater bar. Furthermore, Alaska Waste has claimed that retesting, which is what IGBC did to these cans, they retested them due to field failure, and when they retested the cans, the cans failed retesting. And what Alaska Waste has said is that just because the cans failed retesting, it doesn't mean that their prior certification was revoked. So we had a meeting with IGBC, and if you scroll down one more slide, this is the direct statement from the IGBC, which is in contradiction to what Alaska Waste claims, which is to say that the product did not pass live bear tests. The rare Pacific model 95-gallon bear cart, which is what we have on our streets, has a certification number 5151, it was removed from the IGBC list of approved products, this product is no longer considered IGBC-approved bear-resistant product, I'm not really sure if there's anything more clear than that. So basically, at this point, the way that we see it, Alaska Waste is not meeting the intent of the ordinance with the residential cans that they have on the street. And so we'd like to see a resolution there, I can see a number of ways that could go, I would look for a regulatory resolution from the municipality on this topic. And that's it, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Lena. Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Yeah.
What's Fish and Game's stance, are they at these meetings, and what's their stance on this certification?
They're very disappointed, yeah, Dave Battle is the area bear biologist, and he was, he's participating in all these meetings, and has been part of these discussions from the beginning last year when we discovered the defect, and he's really disappointed, you know, we all, we're looking towards this ordinance to make a change, especially somewhere like Girdwood, and so to be faced with, you know, basically a monumental failure of products on the streets is really disappointing, and it's difficult too, I mean, the conversation about encouraging people to get a bear-resistant can has been a long road, it's been many years, and so it's, you know, it's sort of a dance where you don't want people to just say, "Ugh, well, they don't work, I'm not gonna have a bear-resistant can." No, there are bear-resistant cans that do work, just not this one, and even at that, this one is still better than a conventional can.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just disappointing, and it's difficult, I mean, there's a lot of money involved, and, yeah, it's not an easy thing, so, yeah.
Any other questions? So are you asking for anything specific today?
No, I was just on the topic for an update, and I wanted to thank you all for providing support, and so I thought you might deserve an update, that was larger than just me saying thanks.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from the community? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Brian. Okay, we're now on item nine, Discuss Follow-Up to GBOS Resolution on Domestic Violence and Support Services in Girdwood. So I think you're gonna take this one, Brianna.
Yes, I have spoken or emailed with Chief Weston about the parking spaces at the fire station, that would be a safe space and lit, and she said that, she asked Kyle, because the next step is to also have a surveillance camera over those parking spaces, and what I was told was that there, someone at the fire station is looking into camera brands, and then my question was to her and to us, which, which fund that would come from, and she suggested police, but that's part of my update. And Kyle, do you have anything else about the surveillance camera?
Well, you know, the muni does have a contract with the surveillance provider, it's gonna be probably expensive, depends on what we want to put in, you know, we did broach the topic of putting surveillance cameras up when we rebuilt the fire station, we actually received quite a bit of community feedback against it for privacy issues, just because they just didn't feel that it was a use of good tax dollars to do it, so, so we didn't pursue it at that time, and that was the time that we were actually pushing for it, you know, part of it was for surveillance here, and then also the park, because we had a streak of animalism going on at that time, so if we like to approach- So if we like to approach that again, we can. You know, and my recommendation is if we're going to install a surveillance system, we may put it through the whole library and fire station in that aspect. The other aspect is that I put a request in the parking to see what happens to our parking counts if we take two parking spots and designate them just for handoff, if it's going to be one spot or two spots. And some feedback I gave to Michelle Weston is, you know, we've had some recent events where people have had exchanges that were supervised by police and we reached out to them just to say, "Hey, we're thinking of this idea." And it was given honest feedback and since that they wouldn't use those parking spots because it drawed attention to what was going on within those parking spots and they knew that their partner, that they had an issue with, you know, who may be raising the other, you know, the other parent would not go near those parking spots because they didn't want to draw the aspect that they were doing a safe exchange in the parking lot. So I just, I gave that feedback to Chief Weston and if we want to pursue that. Right now, traffic department is pretty much gutted. Everybody retired before this administration and so there's no real leadership there at this point in time. And who's there is just trying to tackle the high priority items. So I'm waiting for an item like this is falling towards the bottom. Like we have a resolution right now to change the yield sizes to top signs. I don't know when that's going to happen because that is not in the list. So, yeah, so those are the factors that we're working through to make those changes out here. And so that's something to add to the discussion.
Thank you. That's valuable information to hear, I think. And I could also follow up with asking the spokesperson from Awake about another idea, but I feel like the extra surveillance just for these two buildings would be sort of related, but just affected. My other update is that I would like to start working on a flyer slash poster that would be put in different places all over Gerwood where people could know what we have for outreach or what their options are. So contact information and services that are, that exist, but maybe in private places like the bathroom or the stalls in places that our, our community can go to and read in privacy. So basic, just a quick math that I was figuring out without knowing for places like the day lodge stalls and the school and library and possibly clinic, things like that. A high end for flyers that are laminated would be with the dimensions I came up with were, was over 500, but then I came way lower with around 300. So I entertain an approval for $400 so I can make and print flyers. But I would take a while to work on those this summer, hopefully within a month and a half.
So is that, sorry, is that a motion you're making now?
Yes, I could make that motion.
Okay.
I would like to move that we support $400 to go to outreach publication in Gerwood.
Okay. And that would be from the Public Safety Fund?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion or discussion on this item?
I have questions, I don't know. Would you work with Awake on that? Do you have a template for that? You know, it sounds kind of specialized.
Right. I probably will do more with Awake. And they did a presentation for us a few months back and it was pretty deep attachment on PDF and had a lot of resources right there that I would probably use and then see what the clinic here will, will offer for their outreach. But it won't be just copy tasting. Be more generalized to here, but not, not too much information.
Is there, where does the number 400 come from?
So I just did, I called Kinko's and they recommended for this purpose 32-pound paper because I don't, I also thought of a one print, but not have them all up at the same time because places like the post office would get taken down. So I didn't think about places like that. But somewhere where there are skiers frequenting would get wet with snow or water. So the idea that it would be laminated for some of those. Lamination on an eight-and-a-half by 11 is $1.56 per copy? No, $2.49 for one sheet to be laminated. But an 11 by 17 is $4.49 to be laminated. So I did like 10 laminations for the 11 by 17, which would all not be put up at the same time. Would just be having a backlog for replacements.
So 11 by 17 is bigger than is allowed at the post office?
Right.
So you have that in mind for other locations?
Mm-hmm. And then I asked another, a person in the community and they, they thought of, you know, each stall is not something you think of, but that would be at least 50 eight-and-a-half by 11s. So not very, I only did 10 to come up with a lower number for 11 by 17s. That's pretty big.
We have a laminator, so.
Okay.
I'm way cheaper than that.
That's great.
So, so there's that. So, you know, we can, certainly elimination sheets cost money and we need to make sure that we, you know, replenish that.
Document.
But I also think that we should get an idea of how many we can realistically place. I'm not entirely sure, you know, that all locations would welcome that.
Right.
At least not at first. So we can certainly do some small batch printing too, so.
Okay.
You know, I guess just to say, if it came out being less than $400, if you approve $400, we're not going to go and spend the other, the rest of it. But I could see that there might be some cost savings and also some savings in printing, maybe small batch to start off with.
That'd be great. I would, I would like to do that.
So there might be some like formatting help and stuff like that that would be good to get from somebody who's more, who has better desk publishing.
Do we, do we have, what else do we have in that fund at the moment?
We have less than 2,000, you know, we had spent money, I'll have to check that, but we have money going towards the Wind River group. And we spent money for the temporary impound yard at New Year's. And then we had to pay out for our towing fees. We have 400 bucks left in there at least, but at the very least, but I think we may be down to $1,000 left in that fund.
So it wouldn't be disastrous if we allocate to this?
No, no. I mean, I still, I think I still have a little bit of reserve. I have a little bit of encumbered money that I keep aside for towing. We haven't had to do much towing since winter, so, but usually fall is when we find abandoned cars from seasonal work, so we start towing them.
Any other comments from the community? Okay, if there's no more discussion, I think we have a motion in front of us, so we should move on to a vote. Can we have a roll call, please, Kyle?
Yes. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wengard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
And Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passed as far as here.
Thank you. Thank you for your attendance, Brianna.
Thank you.
Item number 10, discuss update to GBOS rules and procedures and GBSA infrastructure to allow online/hybrid public meetings. I will start on this, so, you know, the feedback I keep hearing is when can we both go back to online meetings because it's easier? We even have people who are, who are leaving and have to get back to Anchorage at this very moment. It would be easier for people who are traveling or have childcare issues and everything else. So there's a, there's kind of a, you know, a fond memory of the days when we had online meetings. And there are plenty of other people who prefer in-person. So it would seem like a hybrid, if we can get to work, a hybrid would be probably the best model. I know we have technology challenges, at least for the purposes of GBOS. I had another look at our rules and procedures and as long as we have a quorum in person, there's nothing to preclude us from doing hybrid meetings now as far as GBOS is concerned. I don't think that's the case for all other committees and subcommittees. But I, what, you know, I'm thinking that perhaps what we could do is investigate, at least trying to hold a GBOS meetings or work sessions in hybrid and, and see how that goes. Where do things stand in terms of the technology?
Well, the biggest challenge that I have had is, is picking up voices. And so we did a test run at your last work session or special meeting and we had set up basically a webcam with the mics that came with it and that had very, very poor reception. And it's really dependent on how loud the voices are and whereas what we have set up right now with the mics, that is doing a good job of picking up for the radio, we don't have that option the way it's set up now for the other subcommittees. So I think the biggest thing we're trying to figure out is how can we get better mics that will feed back into, say, those attending online and they can hear what's being discussed in the room in that aspect. So we're trying to work through it. We're trying to incorporate this camera as a way to have that as a web feed since we already own this technology. I've been having all kinds of issues with that, so I have a request in IT to see if we can find some way to hook that camera in. If not, then we'll go with a web feature and I'll just have to get the cords, I'll just set up in the room so that it can pick up really well. So, so, so yeah, I think the biggest thing that we just need to figure out between now and then is just this mic technology and to give it a run. You know, tomorrow, we will be having a work session. Chief Weston, like she said, she's going on deployment, but she's going to call in to present her budget, so we'll be in a web on Teams too and we'll have it up there on the screen. So, so yeah, I think we're just trying to work through that so that it's hopefully a bit seamless once we flip into that and people at home aren't frustrated because they can't hear what's being said in the room.
Okay. And obviously at GBOS meetings, we currently have these microphones set in front of us, which I think come from the, from the radio, from the community club. We don't have that technology ourselves, do we?
No, we don't. And, you know, it'd be nice to find the technology that we wouldn't have to set this all up because, you know, it takes us hour and a half on both sides to set this up and take it down with all the wires and everything, you know, and, you know, it was really easy for Louis when he was running the radio station during Teams, he just turned on the phone and he said it was the best reception or the best mics he had ever until we turned on the, off this air handler, which is approved. So if we can find a way to put microphones in the room without having to do this full broad setup and antenna and all that, then we could go to that Teams, the radio station can plug in that way and it'd be workable. So, so yeah, we'll work through that and try to figure out a solution.
Okay.
We would own our own technology. These mics, these mics you have here are part of the community rooms.
Oh, okay.
Equipment. But when we plug it into the speaker system, that speaker system is really scratchy, it doesn't work very well. So we, if we could, if we can use these mics, maybe we can figure out a way to capture it all and then plug it back into the computer so it works on Teams.
So from a technology side, we are a third of the way there maybe?
Yes.
And we'll continue experimentation.
And the biggest thing on my side is my computer's locked down for security reasons. So when I add a new feature into it, I have to go through approvals and they have this, you know, see how it's going to work and all that because when I, when I plug that in, it's, the computer says, "Not allowed."
Okay, understood. And this set for my procedure, for our procedures, I think we're okay for at least GBOS meetings to, to move to hybrid in principle. But that is not true, I think, with the subcommittees. So there may need to be work on each of the subcommittees or each of the committees, I should say, like land use and, and trails, et cetera.
Yeah, I would, we've asked for clarification from legal and once again, right before the administration change, Todd Sherwood, the municipal lawyer who basically does most of the work for Gerwood, wrote and asked me clarification questions and he was starting to work on it. But then I think with the change in administration and the focus on the homeless issue, they've been pulled off and put on other priority assignments. So I'll follow up with Todd to see if we can get this going on. That's where our grants are stuck too. It's like all this legal review, it's just not, it has been stopped by administration once they tackle these big projects.
Okay, understood. Yeah, I don't think there's any, unless anyone has a, has a particular motion, I'm not sure there's any actual action for us at the moment.
Well, I have a question about that. Are you saying, because my understanding from our last meeting was that our biggest issue, the biggest question was not necessarily around the viability of hybrid or how fast we would, I mean, that is a background question, but the, my understanding of our biggest question from the last meeting is can we legally go back to just hybrid? And so are you saying we can't get an answer to that question?
That's what I've asked for that question, that clarification. And he was working on it, but like I said, we have.
It's just stalled out.
It's just stalled out.
Okay, all right. Because I see that as a separate issue.
Correct.
So there's that and then there's the making hybrid. Because I can agree that hybrid is the preferable in the long run, but in the short run, can we just go back to?
Fully online.
Something that gives us more participation.
Yeah, so my initial, there was a two-part question. My was like, can we go to full online meetings?
Right.
Where there's nobody in person? And if we can, is there a hybrid option that we can do it in that aspect?
Okay. So that question's out there, it's just simmering.
It's just simmering with the lawyers.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure why there's a question over the hybrid option because we have, at least in our rules and procedures, we have a process to deal with for allowing people to participate telephonically. And in the advice that came from the state, they said that any telephonic use is identical to, you know, use an online conferencing systems as well. So I think from our, I would imagine from, I would be very surprised if there was a problem that's doing hybrid. I just have to wait for the wires.
Sorry, a second. Let the motorcycle.
There's a motorcycle outside.
It's a serious.
Very loud.
Chopper.
Okay, so again, I think the, I think the hybrid side should be straightforward. I'd be surprised at the problem there. We definitely, under our current rules and procedures, cannot do online only.
Correct.
And it's, I think, again, from the advice we got from the state, in principle, we could move to online if we chose to, we would have to make that action and we would have to check it's, it's okay at the muni level, but the state level it is.
Correct. So, you know, what kind of struck me earlier was the HLB is their advisory group, just like GBOS and all its subcommittees, and they're meeting in Teams for the next, their first meeting since, I think, January.
Yes, sir.
And they will be having a full online. So, so I will follow up to find out what determination they got on that, so.
Okay. So it probably is not a municipal restriction, or at least it doesn't look that way.
No, but it was something that we've never been addressed before in the, in the past until the pandemic came and then they made a special ruling on it for pandemic reasons. So, so yeah.
So there are, under our current rules, we just need three, we need three GBOS members in person. And then beyond that, we can have another two online or telephonically and that works fine for voting, as long as people feel they can participate in the meeting.
Correct.
It's slightly different when it comes to land use where everybody is an equal member of the body.
Yeah, that's where it gets a little bit different. And Gerwood Trails Committee.
But other communities are, have made this choice, other communities within Alaska. So it's just a matter of clearing the city hurdle.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the mechanics of us changing our own rules, so we, so we made that.
And the technology to make it.
We can. I think we can.
And the technology to make it work.
And the technology.
Right, okay. Because been there, done that. Okay, excellent.
Okay, any other discussions on the issue of hybrid online? I would just encourage the, encourage trails and land use to have this discussion themselves as well. Because although we could, we can impose rules from above, the, it's probably better if, if each group looks at themselves and decides what works best for their, for their group. Then we'll try, we'll try and make sure they're all unified, but what works, we can, we can try out at each committee level as well. Okay, item number 11, agenda, item LUC 2104-04, update regarding LUC and GBOS conclusion to housing work and group request, GBOS resolution support from MN to AMC 2109050C2 regarding accessory dwelling units. My name is on here, but I'd like to start with staff, if you could give us a summary of where we are.
Okay. So this item was before you at your last meeting and, and in June, and also the item was before GBOS, excuse me, LUC in June. And both is old business in June. And I'll start with LUC, the land use committee. It was bought before them to make the changes as proposed. And let me just pull up a summary real quick here, as the summary here. And let me just pull up a summary real quick here, as the summary here in the package shows, to make changes to existing Chapter 9 code to allow ADUs, easier for ADUs to be allowed on properties that are detached. And these changes would allow for that. At that meeting, those, that proposal was voted down for these changes and a resolution was set forward to send it back to the Housing Committee to consider the concerns that came out of that meeting. In the following week, the, that resolution, or that motion of recommendation was sent to GBOS. And GBOS voted for passing the proposed changes, proposed code changes as, as represented here, and did not follow the recommendation that came up from Gerwood, or from Land Use. And then at the last meeting last week of LUC, the, it was brought back to LUC and a motion was passed to move forward, or to go ahead with the proposed changes. And, and a recommendation was set up to GBOS to move ahead with the changes that are outlined here at this point. So that's where we stand at this point. Am I missing anything else?
I think that's right. So I think we're at a position now where the, where Land Use has approved it and GBOS has approved it, but we do not have a resolution approved. Or at least we don't have resolution language. So what I will do is, we have a draft resolution here, so I'll read that into the record. And this one I can read because I have it on my screen in big time. Resolution 2021-17, resolution of support for amendment of Gerwood code regarding accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Whereas over several years, many individuals and business owners have discussed the issue of lack of achievable housing in Gerwood public meetings, as well as in less formal public settings, and have requested action on the part of local government to help solve this problem. And whereas the Gerwood Housing Working Group was established in 2018 to review the housing situation and seek solutions to make more achievable housing options available in Gerwood. And whereas one of the successful efforts in other, in other resort towns and in the municipality of Anchorage has been changed from code to loosen restrictions to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. And whereas the proposed changes to AMC 2109050C2 have been discussed for months at the Housing Working Group, have been vetted with the SiteLine Institute experts in the field who have worked on similar projects in the Pacific Northwest. And whereas the Housing Working Group has reviewed and discarded or modified some suggestions based on circumstances specific to Gerwood. And whereas adjustment to Gerwood ADU code is expected to bring about approximately 10 new dwellings per year onto the rental market while also making existing ADUs legal under municipal code. And whereas the community has discussed the changes in population density and the impact of more people housed in the community, and generally believes that negative impacts are outweighed, where they need to expand housing opportunities to those who live and raise families here are integral to a community's future. And whereas after reconsideration and discussion, the Gerwood Land Use Committee supported this request by a vote in 16 in favor, two opposed and four abstaining. Therefore, the Gerwood Board of Supervisors resolved support for amendment AMC 2109050C2 regarding accessory dwelling units, past, et cetera. So do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question. During this most recent Land Use Committee, was it just a different group of people in the audience, or was there anything else brought up that may, you know, changed their vote?
I would actually, I think Kevin probably was, Kevin was sitting in the front and paying a lot of attention to that. So how would you speak to that issue, Kevin?
So on this most recent Land Use Committee, was there new information provided that changed people's opinion, or was it just totally different group in the crowd that?
Different group, yeah. There was a handful of people last week that were at the previous meeting. And the June meeting, I think maybe what did we have, maybe seven people total? And, and that group, you know, I think it was sort of new information to them, the ADU, and so they were, you know, like I said, it was new to them and they didn't like the sounds of it. And then last week's meeting, there was more like a first time of home buyers there that, and they sort of made their case that, hey, this is a way that I helped you pay my mortgage. And I think that went along ways to convincing the three people that were at the previous meeting, like, okay, well, that's another way of looking at this. And those folks have been there for 30-plus years, their mortgage is set, paid for, and like, well, you know, we were in our twenties, we were in thirties, once trying to make our mortgage. And I think that was the argument that really, you know, carried the change. That answered your question.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, here are no comment, any comments from the audience?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm speaking, but so still, if somebody proposes to do this, they're going through permitting process in the city and submitting plans and following, I don't know how many neighborhoods have HOA restrictions as far as trees removal and things like that.
Yeah.
But it's all going to go through the permitting process.
I don't know if we have HOAs apart from condos. I don't know if we have any, I don't know of any HOAs of single family homes, there might be.
I know that there's ones that are just based on what you can do with your lot. And I don't know if there has any. But every, all these go through the permitting process.
There's a permitting process for ADUs, yeah, yeah.
To get permits and building and land use.
So if it's new construction, you'd go through the normal land use permit process?
Yeah.
And then it would be an ADU. So if it's new construction or addition to your house, or if it's remodeling, it doesn't necessarily go through that.
Well, I know that, like, when Rob Swanson wanted to do his lot because he was moving the little cabin, there was, he had to get the special planning and zoning approval to not, to be closer to the creek, because there's the new creek setback rules.
Right.
So an ADU can, even though the original house is still there, I wonder if the grandfather, I know there's not that many houses on creeks, but if they're going to try to put something there, they're probably going to be closer to a creek.
There are specific rules on, if you're encroaching the creek setbacks in the current code for, for, for stream setbacks, there are rules about how you can change the structure. Generally, you cannot get closer. You can, you can do various things to change the footprint if you're making it no worse or making it better. But I think the example you gave of putting an attachment on the back of your house against a creek and making it closer, I cannot see how that would be acceptable. Okay. No further discussion, let's move to a vote.
Actually.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your headline.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that I'm not by any means super duper knowledgeable about the issue, but I guess I would say just from my personal perspective and what I've heard, Gerwood's main housing problem from my perspective is the lack of affordable housing. And I think, you know, the information, for example, like Kevin just provided about this sort of change in code at Land Use actually contradicts the whereas statement in the resolution of, believe there's not enough affordable housing at the top there. It seems like actually, well, I guess you could say to the flip side of the coin, as opposed to affordable housing in terms of for renters, it's more of affordable housing for homeowners, if it's helping pay the mortgage. But it's not made in a typical way that I, I think the argument being presented. But I would say that I don't find that, so back to the point of that, you know, the primary problem being lack of affordable housing, I don't feel like the argument has been well made that, that this solves affordable housing problems. And I do see the potential for unintended consequences. In particular, the issue of tree clearing being incentivized. And that's aside from the issue of whether or not it's allowable, if it's allowable, just that it incentivizes it in a way that is probably previously not there, and more of an issue with detached setting than an attached setting, just because of the way it happens, you know. So I'm not super happy with it about that. And, you know, if I were to suggest a change, it would be nice if there was language just that could be crafted that could de-incentivize that incentivization, you know, for sort of the business of writing the language. It would be great to see, you know, some thought, purchase a clever language about how to do that. So I guess that's all I have to say.
The, to your first point, the, the experience generally is that if you think of housing as an issue across a continuum of different income ranges, changes to an increasingly available lot of ADUs helps at two points of that income range. It helps the people who are renting by increasing the supply of rental properties. And it helps by people who are just in a threshold of lying by adding a, an income stream to a house purchase, which is the, the example that Kevin gave. So it actually helps at two points on that range. Most other policies tend to help at one area. So it's seen as a, it is not a silver bullet. There is no, there is no one thing we can do to solve the housing problem. It's a small incremental step. As far as the clearance concerned, I mean, I agree with you, principal, I think the, I was very surprised when I found out earlier this year that we don't actually have any restriction on the tree clearing in residential zones, or at least in GO1, GR2, and I think GR3 within Gerwood. You can clear every single tree from your property. You have to do other things to make sure there's some revegetation, but you can definitely clear it first. That was a surprise. And, you know, that doesn't change in this. If, I think, you know, we could definitely have a good discussion about whether we should change that, when we, when we change our, our Title 21, Chapter 9 laws in the future. And that would be, I think, a good discussion at the area level.
I guess I would just say to make sure I was being clear, I think that maybe the, maybe they're taking the same.
Yes, that's right. We need to be able.
Just, again, the sort of matter or the sort of, that's back to the legal out, right? And the question, does it give a further incentivization to move down that path?
Right.
Which is what I was kind of getting at about, is there, aside from the separate issue of can it be revisited later in the future, there's a question of can the language be tweaked now in a way that incentivizes that? But, you know.
Yeah, I take your point. Yeah, I mean, there are opportunities to, you know, make further public comment on this and potentially amend it for the rest of the municipal process.
Those are D and Z, I think.
Sorry.
Those are D and Z, next.
Yeah, planning and zoning would be the next location and then, and then on to the assembly. Okay, was there something else from?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I don't have in my notes the total number of people at that original Land Use meeting from two times ago, but do you have a, a memory of how many were at the last meeting? This, because I couldn't go in this last time, so. The most recent.
I think about 20. I think, I'm not sure if it's in here or not, but I think we had like a.
The vote says.
Sixteen in favor, two opposed.
Two or three and maybe four extensions.
So around 20 people.
Yeah, it's in the resolution.
And I think that.
Oh, right.
This one would be three in favor, two in three in favor, four five opposed and two extensions.
I have a different memory on that, but it's not important. It's bits and pieces, so it doesn't matter. So I have kind of an issue or a question about whereas number seven, if you count down, the one that says the community has discussed the changes in population density and the impact, and generally believes that. My mistake in understanding that that whereas is really referring entirely and only to the last Land Use meeting, because I, I, the meeting before that, that was certainly not true. And our last GBOS meeting, that was not a community discussion. So at what point, when, where, and I do need it to be something besides Housing Working Group, because that is not a community discussion group. So at what point, other than Housing Working Group meetings and other than the last Land Use, has the community discussed the changes in population density and blah, blah, blah?
I think at GBOS we discussed that.
At what point has the community?
If you want to finish with this, there were members of the community at GBOS that there were plenty of commentary in the audience. It was a very robust discussion.
At the last GBOS meeting?
Yeah. The one I was at.
Yeah, I know you were at the last, so was I.
I know.
No, there were not a lot of members of the community there. Do we have, can I, does, does anyone know our attendance from the last?
I can look it up.
Meeting? Yeah. We had about four or five.
Something I'd say, the agenda at Land Use over the last two, two years, we periodically discussed the, this ADU amendment.
I understand that, Kevin, but not the particulars that we are discussing right now, number one. And number two, I've gone over the meetings extensively. I don't see community discussion about this. So I understand that it's been brought up at Land Use and I've read, as I said, every single one of those minutes. And what I'm saying is, unless I'm missing something, I'm not reading it and I'm not seeing it. So am I missing something? Has this not been recorded in, you know, a way? But I have not seen robust community discussion that supports this whereas number seven. So I'd like to know, like, the dates on which that community discussion happened, unless what we're talking about is the last Land Use meeting with 20 people.
I think there's a, there's an interesting question here, if nobody has an objection to this issue. So if nobody sees it as a problem, it sounds like you would characterize it as not having been, you know, discussed.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is this whereas says, the community has discussed the changes in public.
Yes.
I'm just reading it exactly.
Right.
And that is completely separate saying from any claims about what the community cares or not, care about what we are saying in number seven, whereas the community has discussed. And I'm just asking, really? When did that happen? Because I've been paying pretty close attention to this and I get that it happened last week, but it's given a lot of weight to the 20 people at the last Land Use meeting.
Yeah, again, I think we had that discussion at GBOS, we've had that discussion, the specific topics at GBOS, we've had the specific topics at Land Use twice. We've had this issue of adding to housing at multiple Land Use and Housing Working Groups and GBOS meetings in the past. I don't think there's been a, I think there's been a discussion. I don't think it's been seen as a, like, most people acknowledge if we add housing, we're probably going to add people. And it has not been brought up as a major problem until two GBOS, until two Land Uses ago. So I think that, I think there's plenty of evidence that that's an accurate description of what's happened.
Can you give me the date? Because.
I do not have one to hand.
Okay. So if we're going to make this. Oh, sorry. I didn't realize I couldn't finish, but you can.
Okay.
That's all right, go ahead.
I'll know, you go ahead, please.
That's all right, I'm done.
Okay.
Anyway, and then similar to that, can we take a little look at whereas six, where it calls 10 new dwelling units per year on the rental market? I see that we're not clarifying whether that's ADU or short-term rental. I understand that we don't have short-term rental regulation at this point, but I'd just like to point out that we don't have any, that is not necessarily at all related to item number one, whereas. So if we can add these to the rental market, it would, just to be clear, just pointing out, it would make the most sense financially. out, it would make the most sense financially for those to be added to the short-term rental
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you've been at the last meeting or perhaps attended the, or listened to the recordings or watched the minutes, because there were multiple people at the last land use meeting who explicitly said that they intend to use this to add long-term rentals.
I understand there are three of them. I actually did.
Right, so that is, that is
So please don't miss that I didn't, because I did go through that.
Okay, so if you, it would be useful to acknowledge that then. Because there are, there are obviously examples there of people saying exactly that.
My understanding is there were three people who said exactly that. And so that's very great, but we are saying 10 per year to the rental market. So I appreciate the input from those three people, but they're not even a majority from the first year of the rentals. So if they're ready and able and active to build and really do want to do long-term rental, one thing is, that's actually not a commitment on their part. And so if they then do that and then hit a reality in the rental market where people can't afford what they'd have to rent it at, that's one thing. And we have no way of regulating, changing that or following up on that, which is, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm just saying that's the way it is, that's the reality of it. And then the other part of the reality is even that, even that of the first year, that's not even half, that's three. But anyway, I just question some of our wherashes. I'm not sure they're, I think they're based in wishful thinking, but not actual fact.
Do you have a specific amendment you wish to propose?
No, I don't do it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's move to a vote.
Roll call, Mike Edgerton.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
No.
Amanda Sassy.
No.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Okay, thank you. So we can now move on to item number 12. Good Trans Committee request for GBOS consideration of the flow chart for new trails regarding the relationship between GTC, Good Trans Committee and Land Use Committee as advisory committees to GBOS. We have a, I think we have a, something in the pocket.
Yeah, let me get to it. Well, it's kind of here in this section. So I'll speak to this quickly. And so basically, GTC has sent a request up to GBOS to determine if new trail projects has, as this flow chart, this flow, excuse me, flow chart tries to depict how a new trail comes through the approval process. And if part of that approval process, does GBOS want new trails to go through land use and receive land use approval before coming to GBOS? And if, for example, how to deal with GBOS, or how to deal with if Gura Trails approves a trail, a new trail, and it gets to land use and land use rejects that trail, does that stop the process? Or do both come forward to GBOS and then GBOS makes a decision as to what to do? If it doesn't come forward to GBOS, does it go back to Trails Committee to try to change their proposed trail design to meet maybe what the rejection was from LUC? Or does it just go directly from Trails to GBOS with either just a presentation to LUC, without any action LUC, or directly to and skip LUC? And so I think that was the clarification that GTC was looking for GBOS to provide back to them. A little bit muddy there, but I can answer questions.
Okay, so I've got several thoughts on this. The first one is I think there's, there's probably at least two distinct conditions we have to worry about. One is where the trail itself is, would trigger things that LUC would typically deal with, like conditional use permits, potentially variances. I think that's one condition. And the other condition is where there's nothing which would, there's nothing specific which would normally trigger a land use item. I think they're distinct cases. The other comment is that GoD Trails Committee, most of the time, what it's dealing with is items which fit unambiguously within the service area powers. So if it's an issue of parks are wrecked and spending taxpayer money, then it absolutely fits within, within the GBOS responsibility. Sometimes it isn't that, in which case it sort of is parallel. But I see times where it's, where it's unambiguously part of the GBOS responsibility and has nothing to do with land use directly. So I think if we consider the two cases differently of when there's a conditional use or a variance request that goes along with it. In those cases, I think there's no question it has to go through land use as well, but it would still be in parallel, because I think GTC and land use are both sort of according the path. So I don't think that the structure we have here of land use having, of this exact diagram of where land use has a veto is correct. I think they have to go in parallel. I would question whether if there is no variance or conditional use or similar thing, whether it is a requirement for land use to approve it. Land use can always do so. Anything which comes in front of land use can be, there can be a motion and a vote up or down. But I don't think there's even a, if there is no specific request that requires land use, I'm not even sure it is a requirement for it to be approval for other trail issues. So if it's spending money on a trail or something like that. So I hope that it does go through land use, but I don't think it would be a requirement to do so. So I'm not quite sure exactly what that means in the diagram. I think 11 and 12 go in parallel. And then if there are, sorry, yes, 11 would be in parallel with 10, I think. And then both, it would go to 12 in both conditions.
So in this case, this would just be only for new trail proposals.
Okay.
So let's give a prime example of this would be the new mountain bike trails. You know, they built the mountain bike park. And so they would come through and show where they want to put the new trails and, you know, all the, all the details that would go into constructing these trails. And so it would go through these steps here as outlined. And the question would be, does that have to then move to land use for them to approve and then move on? What you're going to see, and there's no denying this, is that it's going to probably be, the final approval is going to go to the Urban Design Commission, UDC, for approval. That's, that's been very clear from the, well, it may not actually, but it's still, it could end up there, but it also could end up with a planning director who has, under code, the administrative right to approve it without sending to UDC. And that's why we've been working on the trails plan, is to give a plan which shows what the community wants, shows the backing of a project. And if it shows that, that in the planning director reviews it and says, yes, this is supported in the plan that's been adopted by the community, then it can be approved without going to UDC. So I guess the big question is, is that that new trail that is being proposed, or the network of trails that are being proposed, should go to LUC either as a presentation or for full review, new business, old business? And then the two steps of GTC, Gura Trails Committee and LUC are completed before GBOS makes a final determination as to if they support it or not. So it'd be, it'd be two bodies to review before GBOS actually takes any action on it. And those two bodies would have to have completed their own action to do it.
Yeah, I see another issue which comes up from this diagram, which is whether, where if it goes to LUC first and LUC vote no, the way the diagram represents it, if it goes to LUC, they have a complete veto on the process. And it would never go to GBOS. That, I think, is categorically incorrect. If that's the way we've been doing it in the past, it is not the right way. And I don't think it's the way we've been doing it in the past. If LUC disagrees, then I think, and GTC agrees, then I think GBOS should still get an opportunity to, to weigh into it, weigh onto it. And then if there is disagreement between land use and GBOS, we will go through the process we normally go through to resolve that, or not resolve it, depending on timing. And so I think the, the issue of land use having a complete veto does not appear to be correct. I think there is still that question of whether land use has to make a decision, or whether land use is an optional decision. Land use can choose to make the decision, because they always can. But we would not say, it would not necessarily be required. I don't have a very strong opinion on that either way. But I think as it stands, it's incorrect, and at least 11 and 10 should be in parallel, not one after the other. Okay. Any other questions from the board or comments or thoughts? I don't know, see if you have one, Williams member.
Um, I, yeah, that, I mean, that was my question. We just don't know if land use had, they don't really have a veto at this point, do they? It's more of a, just a recommendation, like, like all the other recommendations that come from Land Use Committee?
Yeah, that's what's unclear to us, I guess.
I mean, no, so we don't know that much, do we?
If, if land use, the way it says right now, if land use didn't approve it, it goes back to Gura Trails Committee before it comes to GBOS.
And that's what Gura Trail Committee would like to avoid.
Well, I think the question was, is that do we have to go through land use? Because Gura Trails Committee is, is the advisory body to GBOS that just focuses on trails. And so that all the trail discussion for the community should be happening at GTC and going to LUC is just another step that even like on a People for Variants, like Tim Givanas' thing, he goes through less review than a trail would through the community. So that, that was the interpretation I got. So right now, the way it's set up is it would go to LUC as old business and then move to GBOS. And what Mike was bringing up is that maybe they should move in parallel and they go through LUC and GTC and then come to, come to GBOS with their results that happen in each body. And then GBOS has to make a determination what to do. So if the two vote against each other, then
To clarify, to clarify quite slightly, I don't think this represents, this diagram as it stands represents either how we have been doing it or how we should be doing it. So I think this, this diagram has created the impression of a model which doesn't reflect how we've done in the past or how we should be doing it. So I think it's categorically wrong from that position. I think there is, there is a valid question about whether it's a requirement for it to go through LUC or not. And I don't have a strong, I have an opinion, but not a very strong opinion either way. There are definitely circumstances under which it would be required. I don't know if that's true always. Any other questions from the board? If not, let's go.
I could just say one thing that helped me clarify it last month that I may have said this, that seven, eight, nine are in that order also because of the month and the week that they meet. Trails Committee always meets the first Monday. Land Use meets the second Monday. GBOS meets the third Monday. But it's a Trails Committee document, so they are the first one that see it, but eight and nine, or sorry, the flow part could be bumped up, so the rectangles are equal or parallel instead of, you know. That's all.
Okay, please, brother.
Oh, yeah. My kind of perspective on this was, I guess with my normal caveat about what I think about council issues, setting that aside, I do think, well, I guess what I think the easiest thing to do is to do with it would be is that I think that Trails actually, depending on how you define whether or not an issue is a service area board issue or not, like, is it just on the lands within the service area, or does it involve service, service area board action, you know? I think that kind of changes the calculus about what percentage really is going on at GTC. And I think maybe it's not worth focusing too much on that because, well, I guess if you were to take the suggestion that I would make, which is that, I think maybe we don't even need to, having benefited Trails Committee, because this came up and many of the previous ones as well, I think, you know, what I would recommend is that just sending it back to Trails and telling them what you think at a sort of theoretical level, as opposed to tinkering with the diagram and just have someone fix the visuals. And that would be that, you know, A, it was never intended to illustrate that GTC and Land Use, one of them had a sort of, one of them was subordinate to the other. I don't think, that's not how it's been perceived, that's not how it's been done. I don't think anybody really thinks that, you know, or wants it to be that way. The second one is more my opinion, which is that I think that land use should be involved. And like you said, I think you said this, is that I don't see really a point of making it sort of, just sort of a presentation, because they can vote anything. And so, and I also think, you know, I think there's value in having land use involved theoretically, because they can take into account a broader range of land use considerations than GTC does. You know, they situate things, they can, as it's theoretically, situate things within the broader land use context. And also for the sort of pragmatic reason of, if we take land use out of the flow chart or the notion of the sort of process, it is a change from how we've been doing things for as long as I can remember. And I think you'd have to reiterate that the land use operating procedures, because clearly the way that they're defined right now is broad enough that it would make sense to remove them, because they are a land use issue, sort of, it's either the mission or something like that, is how it's, or it's state or like that. So my suggestion would just be to send it to Trails and say, fix the visuals such that it reflects that both GTC and Land Use would review it. And then if there's a conflict, GBOS just figures it out. You know what I mean? Just, you take it on to your consideration and you pass your own, you know, decision on it. And then further bodies down the chain are going to take all of that into consideration anyway, like the UDC or somebody else are going to take all of, or they should at least, think all the common, the different codes and everything like that. So I think that's just like the easiest, cleanest way, is just to give them the concept, say just fix it. And that would be my suggestion, concept.
Right. So I think, I think we're in agreement, the, the visual doesn't reflect either what we want or what is. So the, or rather, the visual reflects a process which does not reflect either what is, what has been, or what we want. So it just needs to be fixed and the question is exactly what that process, how we should write down that process. And it sounds like we're all saying the same thing, I think, that, that obviously if, we have the initial presentation, seven, eight, nine, GTC makes a decision. If GTC says no, it doesn't really go any further. If GTC says yes, land use look at it and make a recommendation, GBOS looks at it and makes a recommendation. And if they differ, then we have the procedure we've, we know and love of resolving that. So I think, I think it's a relatively simple, relatively simple process-ish, given the complexity of everything else we have. But, you know, this obviously doesn't reflect, this make, this diagram makes, implies that there is one subordinate to the other, and I don't think anyone believes that. So it just needs to be fixed to match what we think the reality is, which is that land use is not a veto and it would go to land use and GBOS in parallel effectively.
So there really is no change in procedure at all?
Well, there's a change, the diagram changed.
I mean, the diagram, the flow chart.
Yeah, but we would do what we've done before.
Yeah.
So just to summarize, what you're saying is that GBOS would request action from both GTC and LUC on the new trail proposal? And if they disagree, GBOS would figure out how to work out the difference?
Yeah.
Or represent the difference between the two bodies?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is given that GTC does have a veto, so the Trans Committee can say no, and it just wouldn't go any further.
Correct. It can stop at Trails Committee.
Yeah. But But once it's gone past Trans Committee, then Land Use would look at it, GBOS would look at it and would resolve it.
Okay. So there would be action from both bodies before coming to GBOS for a final vote?
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be action from GTC and
LUC before it comes to GBOS for a final vote. And if there is, because we want to clarify that in there, if there's a difference, if there's a difference of opinion between LUC and GBOS, we want to be clarified that GBOS would handle it.
Yes.
Because right now, it's sending it back to GTC. And I think if they work in parallel, then GBOS will figure out, either to right the difference, or GBOS can make a then GBOS will figure out, either to right the difference, or GBOS can make a, I mean, assertion that they agree with one body over the other.
Or it could be, go back.
Correct, or you could send it back if you can't come to agreement, and then it has to work out. Okay.
We all sound like we're in violent agreement.
I think that'd be nice if somebody could put that into a motion, so we have something to take back to GTC.
I have one point on this, though, maybe I'm not seeing it here, but, you know, this all, there's this assumption that it shows up as old business, and I notice this is something that's come up, in terms of voting on something as new business, so that would be key for Land Use, like, that if there is something to do with Trails that was going to require a Land Use vote, that, you know, came up previous month as...
Yeah.
...business, so that way, you know, Land Use could have a vote on it as old business. So that's, I guess, a clarification thing, or coordination, rather, and I don't know if it's outlined on this flow chart, or if it's implied.
It is. Number eight, so, and like Brianna said earlier, we implied it all happened in one month.
Yeah.
So there would be three presentations as new business in one month, so you would have to show up. And that's kind of most of what we do now with land use and variants and things, requests like that, we try to put them, you know, each week apart from each other, with GBOS and LUC. So, yeah, we would do that. Okay.
So anyone want to have a go at stating this as a resolution?
Or a motion.
Or a motion, sorry.
Can I just clarify one thing about this? I thought that there was kind of a movement afoot in the spring with Trails to kind of say maybe land use isn't necessary, but what we're saying is, land use is still approving whatever comes through out of these, or if, whether we don't, then it goes to GBOS. But, I get that, but it's, there's nothing that's sidelining around the edges of land use. Is that correct? We don't have anything that's going straight from GTC to GBOS, right? Everything has to hit land.
Yeah, everything gets presented initially, all of them.
At land use.
Yeah, and Trails, land use.
Right, 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 all of this, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, seven, eight, nine, and then, and then we're saying, GTC effectively has a veto, and they can decide it doesn't go any further, in which case it stops, or it really goes to 10A. But if it's approved, then it goes to both land use and GBOS.
Doesn't that still make things a little more complicated than, say, I mean, with Trails trying to get rid of these extra steps, because things are still a little more complicated for a trail to get from point A all the way to, yes, you're approved, than some other things?
It just makes the review process probably the most significant that we have in the community for anything that we do, because we go through three bodies.
Right.
But I think the question that I interpreted from the group was that people feel GTC is, all they do is focus on Trails, and so that they are advisory to GBOS on trail issues. But in this case, as the points have been made, since this is a land, basically, development issue, because you're taking land, raw land, and maybe creating a trail, that it should go through LUC. And so, I think the question was, well, does LUC have the power to veto what GTC maybe passed? And I think what discussion here is that, no, they would come in parallel, they would get presentations, we would definitely get significant community review on it, and then it would come to GBOS, and if there was a disagreement, GBOS would have to figure out what to do. And that maybe either they go away, or they send it back and say, yeah, work out these differences and come back to us. So it leaves it a little bit vague in there, you know, in that aspect, but I think it's clear that one isn't vetoing the other, and ultimately, GTC can stop the whole process right away, and LUC may never even have a chance to have action if they voted down.
Before we go any further, I'd entertain a motion, if we continue past 10PM. Nobody wants to do that.
Trying to pick a time. I'll move to pass, or go past 10 to 10:30. One second.
Okay, who's in favor?
Yes.
Right, thank you, voice vote. Great, so we're continuing. Okay, anymore, so does anyone want to actually put this in a resolution?
Our motion.
Motion, sorry, a motion.
So I move to, I don't know if this is works, but I move to take the arrow from 11, that has an X next to it, and make it go straight down to 12, and take out, go to 10.
I thought we were going to move to make them fix it.
Or that, I guess, okay.
Let's make them.
Yeah, maybe a better way to do it is just state what we think the goal should be, and then get them to fix the visual, rather than, I agree, I think, rather than us trying to do the graphic design, we just explain the process.
So I move to send this back to GTC to have Land Use be a part of this, but that ultimately comes back to GBOS, and doesn't go back to GTC. Where do you want?
Okay, so...
I'm getting tired.
To slightly rephrase it, perhaps, to have Land Use and GBOS work in parallel, yeah, Land Use and Trails work in parallel, no, that's not the way to put it.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't work that way.
It's, Land Use, whatever the outcome from Land Use, it still goes to GBOS.
That's the way, yeah.
Yes, and then it's resolved after that, if there's differences.
Okay, so I move that it goes to Land Use, and then whenever Land Use says it goes to GBOS, and that that should come from GTC back to us.
Okay.
One second.
Good luck with that one.
I think I understood that. I think I understand what we're voting, I think we're voting, I think the discussion is consistent.
But I don't want to have to write it out.
If there's no more discussion, let's roll call, please.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, so we're now on item, item 13, Agenda Item LUC 2106-04, Gerwood Community Land Trust Request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Community Garden in Gerwood, Krista Hope presenting. I do not see anyone presenting, did you have any?
So the summary coming out of LUC was that Krista Hope was basically seeking renewal of Gerwood, GBOS's support for community gardens in Gerwood. It's a concept of having community gardens in Gerwood. She's looking to find more land to open up more community gardens, right now there is a community garden currently at the Gerwood Chapel, but she has not secured a spot, but she wants to renew the resolution that community gardens are supported by the community. So, I'm trying to see if we have a resolution in here.
We do.
We have a resolution in here which outlines what she is seeking, and that was passed in...
2017.
2017?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, this was passed in 2017?
No, I got the GBOS in 2017 to agree that community gardens are important in Gerwood, pretty much. Now, they also said that we could build a community garden, but I didn't actually get this kind of language, which is really good for actually making things happen, maybe.
Yep, so there's a, what's interesting, I think, is that in Title 21, there's community gardens as a community use, as a kind of parks use, is defined in the Downtown, Chapter 11, it's defined in Anchorage-Bollman, Chapter 5, it's defined in Eagle River and Chugak in Chapter 10, but it's not defined in the Gerwood Code. So it's clearly missing, probably because we were the first piece, we were the first code, it's not gone back from being fixed. So I think it's, you know, it's an obvious gap, and the land use, the land use determination, which I think they got, I haven't seen it, but I've been told they got a land use determination which doesn't seem to match what we would expect if it was in any other area. So I think there's just a piece of code missing, we should, we should probably go ahead and support and fix. I imagine we'd go through land use for a specific code amendment, but I think that's consistent with what's being asked for in this, in this resolution, I believe. Yeah? Yeah, it is. There's a, to include code, there's a, include gardening, to update amendment, amend municipal code, to update gardens community use. So I don't think there's anything inconsistent in that.
Which whereas is that?
The therefore, it's the...
The therefore, yeah, that's the actual action.
Mm-hmm.
So I can, for the purposes of process, I can read this into the record. Just get the key, just need to get to the right page here. Okay. Resolution 2021-15, Resolution of Support for Gerwood Community Garden Location for Gardening to be Added as Community Use to Gerwood Land Use Code, Whereas Community Gardens are an Important Social Addition to the Community of Gerwood, where many people live on lots that are not compatible for productive gardening, and Whereas the Concept of Eating Healthier Locally Grown Foods is One Those Positive Results in the Community and the Environment, and Whereas Currently No Desirable Locations in Gerwood Are Available as Utilable Code for Gerwood Does Not Include Gardening as Community Use, as it does in Other Parts of Anchorage, and Whereas Community Garden in Gerwood Will Be Run by Volunteers Using Collective Power to Build, Maintain, and Manage the Gardens to Ensure the Sustainability of the Project After Initial Construction, and Whereas This Letter of Support Will Provide Proof of Community Interest in Support and Renew Potential Locations for Community Garden, which Will Then Be Considered by the Community in the Final Location Agreed Upon, and Whereas the Gerwood Land Use Committee Supported This Action Supporting a Community Garden, and Identifying Possible Locations By a Vote of 17 in Favor, 0 Opposed, and 2 Abstaining, Therefore the Gerwood Board of Supervisors Resolve to Support Locating a Community Gardens in the Gerwood Valley, and Encourage Land Stakeholders to Identify Locations They Would Consider for This Use, and for Amendment to Municipal Code to Include Gardening as a Community Use, Thereby Expanding the Areas That Can Be Considered for the Purpose of Establishing a Community Garden, Passed, Approved, etc. Do I hear a second?
One second.
Okay. I, just for the purposes of drafting, the one thing we probably want to change is that therefore into two therefore's.
Okay.
But that's kind of a, just a small drafting thing, I don't think we need to formally agree the language, there's a well-known pattern for doing that, because there are two distinct tasks. Any discussion? I'm not sure I completely understand.
Well, I guess I have a question, just because Amanda brought up that it was in 2017 that you initiated it, is it running out? That's why she's...
No, it's just been a long time, I think. From my understanding.
Yep, the one in 2017 also established a specific location, which is not actually available.
Right, right.
At least under current code.
Take care of that.
And this does explicitly ask for a change in code, although it's kind of, you know, if we actually propose a change of code, it's kind of redundant, because the proposal, the specific change will override this. So this is kind of an intent of an intent. The 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the fifth, whereas, I'm not really sure what this is saying, so whereas this letter of support, so, does that mean this resolution provides proof of community interest? I'm not, I'm not quite sure I agree with what that's getting at, or understand what it's getting at.
I think that was specifically the request that the petitioner had, was that she wanted something to show landowners, that the community was interested in this, to the point that they should consider whether they have land that should be used for it.
We could change it from letter to resolution.
Maybe, maybe that's just enough, yeah, at least read it.
Because it's not, yeah.
I agree with that.
Gotcha.
Okay, any further discussion? I'm not seeing any that move to a vote.
Okay, roll call, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, great. Now we're on item 14, Agenda Item LUC 216-05, has a Working Group Request for LUC Recommendations for GBOS Resolution of Support, for HLB to Prioritize Allocation of a Percentage of Attainable Housing in the Agreement for HLB Parcels 611, 616, 617, Area of Community, not Totten Hills. So there was a request from, there was a request from LUC, want to do this, we have another resolution drafted, so what else can we read this?
Yes. Resolution 2021-18, Resolution of Support for Allocation of Percentage of Attainable Housing in the Agreement for Disposal of Heritage Land Bank HLB Parcels 6-011, 6-016, and 6-017, Whereas Gerwood Residents and Area Businesses Are Struggling to Find Housing That Is Affordable Within the Community, While Many Existing Homes Here Are Not Owner-Ocupied and May Be Used as Investment Properties for Short-Term Nightly Rental, and Whereas the Community Has Identified That the Need to Provide Attainable Housing for Those Who Live and Raise Families Here and Is Integral to Our Community's Future, and Whereas Gerwood Land Use Committee and Gerwood Board of Supervisors Have Heard Concerns Regarding Housing From the Community and Responded With Implementing the Gerwood Housing Working Group, which Was Established in 2018 to Review the Housing Situation and Seek Solutions to Make More Achievable Housing Options Available in Gerwood, and Whereas While Many of the Options Identified by the Housing Working Group Are Reactive in Nature, Such As Code-Changing, Change Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units and Possible Regulation of Short-Term Rentals, There Are Opportunities to Be Found in Proactive Effort to Provide for This Need in New Construction Projects, and Whereas Recent Requests for Proposals for HLB Parcels 6011, 6016, and 6017 Has Resulted in Selection of Pomeroy Property Development LTD as the Preferred Proposal, and Whereas Potential Disposal of This Land to Pomeroy Property Development LTD Provides an Opportunity to Include Attainable Housing Targeted to Meet the Needs of Workforce and Family Housing for the Community as a Whole, as Well as Employees of Aliaska Resort, and Whereas the Housing Working Group and the Gerwood Land Use Committee Have Requested that the Gerwood Board of Supervisors Make This Request for a Percentage of Attainable Housing in Addition to Aliaska Resort Employee Housing to Be Included in the Agreement for Disposal of the HLB Parcels Under Consideration, and Whereas the Gerwood Land Use Committee Supported This Request by a Vote of 15 in Favor, 0 Opposed, and 3 Abstaining, Therefore the Gerwood Board of Supervisors Resolve Support for HLB to Prioritize Allocation of a Percentage of Attainable Housing in Addition to Employee Housing to Be Included in the Agreement for HLB Parcels 6011, 6016, and 6017, Passed and Approved, etc.
Do I hear a second?
One second.
Thank you, Amanda. Any discussion?
I just have a question, that's just, I'm not, I should be more familiar with it than I am, but what, what is attainable, what, how do they determine what attainable is? Is there a monetary?
I would say, I mean, I know what it means, but I think there's the same question, this isn't quite, this isn't quite specific enough to be useful. But, I mean, the concept is, it matches the, you have housing, housing costs which matches the income and employment of a community. So that's how it's kind of, defined is a little strong, but it's a better term than affordable. Affordable is a, is a very much a moving target, and is often meant to be something very technical and specific, which this is not. I'm not quite sure this really says enough to be valuable, but we're also not at a position where we can, where we can add any details to make it valuable at the moment, we may be able to in a few weeks, but I'm not sure we can today. There are some specific changes we could make around, you know, around specific policies or specific things like, you know, having a defined percentage for use for primary housing, residents rather than second homes. There are a few things we can do like that, but again, to put any specific numbers in, we're just, we're just not in a position to do that at the moment. So this become, this is a little too vague, I feel, for, to be useful, but it, you know, maybe it pushes in the right direction, but it pushes things very, very softly. I think I wrote part of this, I'm criticizing.
I think it says twice that the percentage also includes what already is employee housing.
I think it says twice that the percentage also includes what already is employee housing. Also totaling the new housing they're building.
Yeah, I think it means attainable housing in addition to any employee housing, so not just employee housing, that's the way I read it.
Okay.
So that is, that is saying something beyond just employee housing, which would mean resort employee housing. My sense is this is, this is close but not quite ready.
I think there's actually an extra and in the second whereas, and that keeps bugging me, but I know it's not even worth going over this, sorry, but I just, my brain keeps getting stuck on that and...
I accept it, it's any time. These statements make me crazy.
I bet. They would make me crazy, too.
Would really disable it.
And I don't think at land use we had any more specifics as far as percentages or anything to work with.
No, we didn't, not last week.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So you could wait.
I think we, to make this more concrete, we'd either have to have something specific in terms of numbers, which I just think is too difficult to do, or talk about specific policies such as, you know, having, having at least some allocation to primary or having covenants, deed restrictions, whatever it might be, to either have income, income limits for housing or, or employment limits on housing, you know, as in location employment or, or primary residence limits. But again, it gets very specific and I don't think we're in a position to be that specific yet. I think we have weeks before this. We definitely have, I mean, we have a period of time before any real action is going to happen on this. There'll be some agreement proposed, and then there'll be, there will be disposal actions probably which are proposed and go through a public process. So I don't personally feel that this is, it was time sensitive when, if this was going to be part of an RFP evaluation. I do not think it's time sensitive at the moment, though. I think we have a month or two to sort of tighten this up and get something better.
So as chair, would you like to pen this?
I would like to get a sense of the body of whether that's what we'd like to do.
Yes. I think that's...
Everyone seems to be nodding.
Yeah, I kind of hate to kick you in the head.
It sounds to me like, it sounds to me like we should revisit this next month.
Yeah.
Should we just make a quick motion to table this?
To table this to a definite date would be the motion. Would someone like to propose that?
I propose, oh, go ahead. I propose we table this till our next GBOS meeting is up.
Second that.
Okay.
The third for tape.
Okay, any discussion on this topic?
Roll call. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Item sixteen. Girdwood Trails Committee request, request for approval of Huddle AK proposal to complete the Girdwood Trails Master Plan at $22,880 from the PAX and REC 406 account.
So we're not seeking action tonight because GTC hasn't had a chance to vote on this as they didn't have a meeting in July. And so, but we will return and we will probably ask you at a special meeting on August fourth, right after GTC, to consider this, if GTC passes this. And so the request is to use from the capital account to pay for additional work that I've already approved, and if you guys do not pass it, I will pay it out of my operating budget for this year, for work sessions that we had with, in the original scope, we assumed five, we ended up with four additional work sessions with the committee as we worked through this, and so to pay for that, plus the, to cover one additional one in the future about it. The other two aligned items are assuming that we may have additional meetings with the subcommittee, and those would be regular GTP meetings that we have on Thursdays before, but we don't know if we'll need all those and, and if we need to do additional subcommittee review and comments. And so these are just pre-planning to have the money encumbered in case we need to go through those steps. And then also the approval process, once it moves into that, if we need Holly's support for GTT, GBOS, the Heritage Land Bank Advisory Committee, P and Z, which we know we may have to go through P and Z on certain things, and then UDC. So, so all these items are pre-planning and Holly feels that if we had to go through all these different steps, this would be the total cost. That doesn't mean we're going to spend it all, but we don't know what the path forward looks like. And so having Holly involved, I feel is important as we go through and hopefully get this plan completed and approved.
So can you clarify again? I think the way I would describe it is that when we look at this split, the first one is work that's already been done and we effectively have promised we will pay for, but we haven't actually funded the money yet, so we haven't added that to the budget.
I haven't paid for it because I wanted to see if we could use it out of our capital dollars versus my operating budget. So we would actually be paying for four meetings that have already happened, but we're asking for a fifth work session in here in case we need it.
Yeah, understood.
And work sessions are typically three hours long.
Right. So four, eighty percent of that has already been spent, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
And I like to use the capital account to pay for it.
Right. And we're not going to act tonight, but the, I'm a little uncomfortable about, about the, the original budget was, I think, somewhere in the forty thousand range?
Correct.
So this is more than, you know, this is adding more than fifty percent to it. I'm a little uncomfortable for doing this in a, in a, in a sub special meeting where we have basically no public attendance, but that's a discussion we'll have next time.
Okay. And the only reason I suggested that was to keep the ball rolling on where we're going with the plan, otherwise we will stop any process, we will gather the comments back and we will tabulize them, but any process going forward from there, there will be, you know, in the aspect. So I just wanted to, we're trying to keep it rolling, but we can stop and wait if we want to wait till the next GBOS meeting, have it at a regular meeting.
Any other comments or thoughts? Okay, thank you. So we have no action on that tonight.
No.
Item sixteen. Review and vote on changes to GVSA nonprofit recreation grant information application and review documents.
So this is the work that you, that we did with you in the work session and reviewed all the changes to the nonprofit grant creation. And so, you know, in the packet here, it goes through the different changes that were discussed and, and now they're in need of approval for, for going forward, so.
Right. Actually, today we already posted the first part, the grant announcement, because today was two weeks before when the grant applications will be available. And so this one is already posted at the post office and everywhere else, and I also sent it out to the grantees that we traditionally receive requests for or from. And then everything else are modified documents that have been looked at on various occasions here over the last probably six months. And making the changes specifically that we were talking about in our last meeting having to do with the restrictions on funding and sort of expanding them to the 501(c)(3), (c)(4), (c)(19), as verified by a formal designation letter from the IRS stealing language that we found elsewhere. Organization must have been in operation in the GVSA for at least one year prior to application, therefore not having a specific date to change and have immediately be wrong next year. So I, there are no changes to this that we have not already discussed, it's just hopefully formatted better in a couple of spots where it was difficult. And then I think, you know, the, the real value in doing this now, so close to when the application cycle is, is that you'll be looking at these grants in the not too distant future. You'll have the grant application meeting in, I think we determined September, October? And then making your determinations, you'll be discussing the budgets starting tomorrow, so, so that will be helpful. So this was, this is all going to be pretty fresh in your minds as we work forward on the, the grant cycle. And specifically, I think, where things get messy is when you're looking at the grant applications and trying to decide, is it a one or a five as far as, you know, how I'm going to rate these? So, so it'll be handy to have it all be close.
Okay. So I know we've discussed this in multiple work sessions, so I entertain a motion to approve these changes.
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you, Captain. Any further discussion? Although we're very quiet now, I feel, we've had a very robust and extensive discussion in the years in the past, but I think the quiet is very much comfort in our, comfort in our understanding of the process. Okay, thank you, Margaret.
We're sorry we didn't write a resolution for this.
I have no more whereas.
We've run out of whereas, there's only so many.
Last paper.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, then move to roll call.
Sure. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Thank you. We only have two more items of old business and, let's see, well, we're attempting to move forward, let's, let's continue on to item seventeen. Agenda topics for GBOS and MOA quarterly meeting just scheduled for next Monday, July the twenty sixth in Anchorage.
So this will be your first meeting with the new city manager, Amy Nabaski, and probably also the head of economic development, Adam Trump. It's a similar structure to the way it was the last administration with Bill Fawley, Chris Shutey. So a lot of times, items will fall under different management and, and so, so we're just setting the agenda, this is the items that have come up, you have an introduction and welcome. Agenda item number two is economic development, tax exemptions under service area boards. And then three, discuss the key concerns and projects of the Girdwood community, which are the fire department, housing, nightly rentals, accessory dwellings, parking, industrial park, planning efforts, area plan and trail master plan, secure trash regulation zones, and cemetery projects. So probably just giving them, giving her, and both of them, update on these projects as they're going to probably see more of it coming forward to them.
In fact, I think all of those fall under the economic and economic development except for fire department, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, parks is under there, isn't it?
Yep, so Amy Nabaski oversees the fire department, parks, you'll be seeing that discussion in there. So if there's anything you guys would like to add, otherwise we can move this forward to, to Amy and Adam and things like that.
I definitely don't see anything, any, any other points or thoughts on this? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We'll do that, we have one more item of old business, but...
I can think, just real quickly, one thing about that meeting is that I can't make it to that, I'm going to be out of state, so if there is any way for me to attend by telephone would be great, but...
Yeah, there should be.
There's technology, we can make that work there. We'll get you information.
It'll probably be phoned by, rather than Zoom, though, won't it? Maybe it'll be Zoom.
Whatever, I'll do whatever it takes.
It's actually, normally it's in a room that has good technology in it. I would entertain, it's ten twenty seven, so I'd entertain a motion to extend this a bit further.
We have one more item?
We have three more items.
He's looking at me. Ten, ten minutes?
Let's make it fifteen, just to...
Fifteen, tell him, ten forty-four. I'm going to extend the meeting, fifteen minutes.
Second.
We'll do this in a voice vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Yeah. Okay. So our next item is actually nineteen, which we've moved up. Update on Public Safety Advisory Committee CD candidates and request to set, oh, sorry, it was request to set a meeting for voting, we're actually probably going to vote on that tonight.
Yeah, so we had an application, we had a period open for people to submit their interest in serving on the Public Safety Advisory Committee. This is the only committee where GBOS appoints people to that committee and we only received interest and it was from Tommy O'Malley and, and he would like to serve in front of you as a letter that he submitted for his interest in serving.
Does anybody know Mr. O'Malley?
Doesn't know.
I talked to him at the post office on Saturday and he was pretty keen on this. Do you think he, he could probably do it?
You know, Tommy was very much part of the creating of the police services for Girdwood and very, very involved and created Coffee with Cops, all those type of things, so he's been very key on this issue.
And it sounds like the hard work of the cemetery committee has been completed now, so I'm sure he's looking for something to do.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion or we can move probably, would anyone like to move?
I'll move the way from Tommy O'Malley for this position.
Aye, second.
Okay, so Tommy O'Malley took appointment to CD of Public Safety Advisory Committee. Okay, if there's a little more discussion, let's move to voice vote, oh, sorry, not voice vote, let's move to roll call.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, great. We have completed old business, we have two items of new business to move on to. Next item is item eighteen, development tax incentives under service area boards. So I'm glad it's late because I won't go on about this for too long, but there's themes like potentially housing or, or certain types of economic development are often incentivized when, if the market doesn't have, if there are things which are beneficial to the community but the market doesn't directly support, or it doesn't make complete financial sense in the market, or you want to incentivize certain types of behavior, one of the common ways to do that is to use property tax exemptions. This is done widely amongst many, many communities, it's probably the, one of the main methods for incentivizing certain types of, of activity. Until Tuesday, Anchorage had a variety of tools to do this, and one of them was to, was to provide just a discount on property taxes for economic development for, I think it was up to five years of tax abeyment, so you could improve a property under certain conditions, you know, maybe add, an improvement could be to add employment and other things to a community. And the municipality could provide a tax incentive to do so by discounting taxes on those improvements. The, there was a particular project which was approved at the assembly last week and there was another ordinance in parallel which cleaned up certain pieces of language. And one of the things it did was take some language from state statute, which passed in 2017, SP 100, which opened, which actually did a number of, opened up a number of options for municipalities, and incorporated some of that language into Anchorage code. One particular part of that is, has the effect of not allowing tax exemptions for any taxes which are levied by a, a point, by an appointed elected service area board. So what that effectively means is that in Anchorage, if, somewhere in Anchorage Bowl, if the tax rate is, say, fourteen and a half, it can, you can discount that basically to two point six. If, or as much as two point six. In Girdwood, if we have, I think it's twelve point four or something, we can discount it to eight. We've got far less, far less flexibility in what we can do. And what's kind of interesting is the reason this particular language to not allow municipalities to provide this tax incentive, the reason it's in state statute is because at the state level, they believe that service area boards have complete control over the taxes and can set their own rates, and municipalities cannot override that. In Anchorage, we're the other way around, all we can do is ask and provide advice... And yet, with, this language has been adopted to take away this flexibility within service area board areas, which affects Girdwood, you know, Chuyeki, Gourdeva, and Glen Alps. So there's clearly a contradiction here, and when I brought this up to the assembly and a few days before the assembly meeting, I think they, they took the approach that, you know, this had to pass for a particular project in place, and this would be cleaned up afterwards. So I just wanted to make sure it was in the front of everyone's mind and we were aware of it before we went to the municipal meeting. And again, I can, I'll answer questions, it's probably some future date, not tonight, about the gory details of this, but it does, particularly when we have the, the issue around the development in the Hope Hills area, this is potentially something which could be actually of great use in the short term, but losing this flexibility is kind of painful. And it was in, it was unintended, it was kind of an accident. We don't have, we're not gonna obviously perform any action on this tonight, we'll discuss it again at the MOA meeting. So if there are any questions, I'll answer them, if not, let's move on to item 20. So the 2022 budget cycle for fire department, public safety, parks and rec, any cemetery funding, and roads. So we have the following budget meetings scheduled, tomorrow here at 7:00 PM, August the 4th, 7:00 PM here, August the 16th, at 6:00 PM, Girdwood Community Room preceding the next, the next meeting, and then budget approval is expected at our next regular meeting.
Okay, is that, it's just a work session, is it open to the public?
Yes, yeah, all the work sessions are open to the public. So these are, I believe these will all be work sessions unless there's a special meeting associated with one of them.
Correct. For the most part, they'll be work sessions.
So work sessions, we can discuss things in detail, we're not actually taking action with. So the, the action will be at the, the meeting next month, the regular meeting.
Sure.
Okay, if there are no comments on that, then I think we can consider, adjournments? Oh, sorry, Brenda, I missed you. Sorry.
I was just curious, I'm not sure if I've ever actually done these today.
Oh, you should, they're exciting.
Do they, does it cover certain, like, fire departments, you know, are they?
We normally cover all of them in each, what's happened, what's happened in the past is that we cover all the budgets on each meeting, but there are a lot of questions come up in the first meeting, and sometimes some of each budget's a lot of over. They made, the fire department often takes a little longer to get it, to get the, to have, go through their board as well. So, but effectively, we'll discuss all five, or all four, really, at each of the, at each of the meetings, and then questions get answered, there's more refinement as we go through.
That's what the agenda looks like. Are you supposed to agenda for tomorrow?
Oh, is it up on the site?
Yeah.
It's been on the site for a week, but he's just saying that it's up there.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, so we just go through each department.
And earlier today, I posted the meeting materials for that, sorry, I missed it on Friday.
So that contains the details that we currently have, I haven't come to that yet.
Correct, we're missing the fire department budget request, so they're gonna lay it on the table tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I joked about it being exciting, it's actually, it's actually intricate, there is a lot of information in there, and it's, it can be very educational. Okay, now entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll assume that's accepted. Thank you very much. A long meeting again tonight. Well done, well done. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.